Or the tables, sorry. Okay, welcome back. The board is now back from recess and we are going to go into our school consolidation presentation. With Superintendent Dr. Luke Minor and Andy DeGraw, Chief Operations Officer will continue their final discussion on school consolidations. I would just like to preface this with, we understand the Barnett discussion is a very delicate topic. And this was a request that came from the board to the administration as just a seek of options. And so with that, Dr. Minor, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, thank you, President Burnett and members of the board. This evening, we've got several things to cover with the Board of Education. We are going to do a consolidation recap, so go back through a lot of the slides we presented at the first work session. To ensure that the board has a good understanding of the framework that was used and the metrics that we use to apply against that community-created framework. We'll talk about transitional supports and the academic improvements, the silver linings that come from school consolidations. And then really what I think is going to be a highlight of tonight's session is getting to the different supports that are provided through our Student Support Services Department, our Teaching and Learning Department, and our Special Education Department. We know there's been several questions around the different facets of the departments that will support our schools and what that looks like if consolidations happen with the vote of the board. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Assistant Superintendent LaPlante and Mr. DeGraw to continue the conversation.
Thank you, Dr. Minor. So as you indicated already, we are going to be going back over some of the things that we had previously addressed in our first session, January 6. At the request of the board, we are trying to keep things in front of people. As we have more people joining us and paying attention and joining in on the conversations, we want to make sure everybody has similar information moving forward. Also tonight, though, we will be taking a deeper dive into what improvements we hope to gain from this consolidation effort. This is a painful process, but we really have a lot of expectation that this would help us move in a direction that would improve educational outcomes for our students and help us take the resources we have and focus them on our students. So that will be our primary focus tonight, once we get through the recap. So again, the consideration to consolidate schools and to serve students on fewer campuses is directly related to the intention to use the resources that we have. We could always use more if the state's listening, but to use the resources that we have to benefit students directly, and that's the hope here.
So just going into the why, reviewing the why behind consolidation, we're looking at, going back to about 20 years back, we're looking at over 2,000 fewer students in the Fairbanks, North Star, Barrow School District. If you look at brick and mortar students, it's an even bigger number than that. Our correspondence program is significantly larger today than it was back then. So if you were looking at actual brick and mortars, it's closer to 2,700, 2,800, that number in our brick and mortar buildings. And then going, just finishing out the why, as Ms. LaPlante just talked about, we have a significant funding issue in the district that has been widely publicized. The current BSA at 5960 within the funding model has not been increased for eight consecutive years. FY '26 would be nine consecutive years. So if that number were indexed for inflation, had tracked inflation over the past few years, it would be a full $1,800 more at 7770. So yeah, needless to say, the district faces a significant financial challenge to overcome. And there's no one item that will help us overcome that full deficit, but this is a, this is a big, this is a big arrow in the quiver, so to speak, to get to, to what we have is currently a $16 million deficit, $16 million hole to fill.
So we've talked about this previously, but we did begin this process last year and last spring. We were tasked with extending this process and including more involvement from the community. And so there was lots of opportunities for community feedback, different forms, different surveys. We brought that together this fall and looked at the information that we had, and from that, we created collectively a school consolidation framework. So we have referenced this framework throughout the process, and one of the things that we discovered very carefully was that there were certain things that had to be considered before other things. And so there actually is two tiers to the consolidation framework, Phase 3A and Phase 3B. And throughout the next part of the presentation, we're just going to be addressing how those elements were focused geographically within our school district regions. It's important to understand that what applies in one region and rises to the top as sort of key decision-making factors or what helps you lean one way versus another is different region to region. So we'll do our best to try to explain those things.
The zero to four age population density was a data point that we worked into the equation a little bit later in the, in the game. So we wanted to include this in the slides. We had this in our January 6th presentation. But this is a geographic map that shows, basically, we're looking at what's in the pipeline, so to speak, as far as preschool-age children in the different areas of our district. So red being a little lighter, less, less density population, and the greens being higher. And then the next slide provides a breakdown for most of the schools where the data was available. Again, broken out into the green, which means higher population density, yellow in the medium range, and then red in the, in the lower density population category. And then, again, reviewing the, this is a district-wide visual illustration of the different regions. So one of the first factors that we looked at, 3A, was geography. And looking at the different geographic regions of the school district and determining whether or not it was viable to consolidate buildings in those different areas. So going from northeast to southeast, and then the North Pole area, Central Fairbanks and west being the five different geographic areas.
And I'd like to add into this section here that our heart has gone out to every single school community throughout this process, and there's no school that we didn't consider, and there's no school that is on this consideration list without having some painful elements around it. But if we look at the need to close five schools, which we determined we did need to do, it would be illogical to focus all five schools centrally located and then disperse everybody out to outlying schools. And in fact, the math doesn't work. There's simply not enough room available. So we, we did consider multiple options, and we have brought what we believe is the most reasonable, most least impactful, and with the most potential positive outcomes forward. But we considered many things and we had many deep conversations about the impacts that we were creating with this. But it is my belief that we have put forward the, the plan that has the, the least impact with the best possible outcomes.
Yeah, and I'll just echo that. I made comments similar to this at a prior meeting. All of our schools are great. And I know board members have said this as well. Every one of our schools in our district is phenomenal, and I truly believe that. We, and, and we fully expect the different communities in those various schools to fight for their schools and be passionate about that because they are great schools. Having said that, administration took the framework and stepped back. As Ms. LaPlante said, we considered every school in the district. No school was off the table, and we applied the factors. And as we went through the various factors, I almost, somewhat, the, the candidates rose to the forefront that we have presented, that administration has presented. And, and as she also mentioned, this is an important fact, key to remember, that in different geographic areas, different factors were, were the tipping point. In one area, it was facility. In other area, it was, it was walk zones. In other, it was something else. And so that's just an important note to remember as we talk about the different regions and the different factors that we, that we're, we're gonna, we're gonna outline here. So we'll start with the southeast region. The, the school that is on the recommended list here is Salcha Elementary. The, the considerations for closure include a, a small, low enrollment. There's a total of 47 impacted students at Salcha Elementary, and then nearby capacity available at Anderson Crawford Elementary. So the district has had consistent challenges staffing. We, we have challenges, as do all school districts in the state and across the country, staffing many of our schools. But the, the challenges have been a little bit more acute in our outlying schools, and that has, has been the case at Salcha Elementary. So minimal impact to the number of routes, actually no impact. Same number of routes prior to consolidation as we would have post-consolidation. And then just a generally higher cost per student to educate the students at around 21, 21,250 compared to district-wide average of 11,000. So the projected savings for a consolidation of Salcha, this would be a complete consolidation without any remaining staff or any, any remaining semblance of a school at Salcha would save approximately $1 million annually. And then the transition plan for the students would be to be relocated to Anderson Crawford Elementary.
So in the northeast region, the school that we are offering for consideration for closure is Two Rivers Elementary School. And many of the same types of factors that apply to Salcha apply to Two Rivers. Currently, we're serving 56 students that would be impacted, and those students would be served at either Weller Elementary School for K-5 or at Tannenbaum Middle School for sixth through eighth grade, because currently Two Rivers is a K-8 school. We also have had challenges staffing Two Rivers, although I want to commend that staff out there for being very creative and always stepping up and finding a way to, to make it work. Transportation would continue to be the same. We would have no additional routes required. And the, the cost of educating students there also is higher and would be brought more in line with the rest of the district's service. Students would transfer to Weller Elementary School and to Tannenbaum Middle School, and their feeder school would become Lathrop High School.
So then moving to the North Pole region, so here we have Midnight Sun Elementary on the consolidation list. I mentioned geography being the first step in determining the number of schools for consideration district-wide. And then really with, we determined we were able to, it was viable to close a school in North Pole. And then we kind of have geography within that geogra-, geographic region is what played the key, was the key factor. Often folks have asked why not North Pole Elementary? There's a significant walk zone around that school, and so that would increase our transportation costs if we were to consolidate North Pole Elementary. As I mentioned, geography within this geographic region was a main factor. A natural reallocation of students, Midnight Sun being centrally located between Tiquisic Brown and North Pole E was, was a, a factor for consideration. Last year, it's often also been brought up, well, Tiquisic Brown was, was the candidate last year. As we, we looked at the relocation of students from Tiquisic Brown, there was a need to minimize impact on students to, to relocate students to the Fairbanks area, to Fairbanks Schools. And that was resoundly rejected by the community. The desire was for Tiquisic Brown students to remain in the North Pole feeder system. And so we didn't consider that a viable option. So to minimize the impact on the fewest number of students, it, it made, it made sense to, to have Midnight Sun as the, the candidate for a consolidation. And then continuing, next slide. So disadvantaged students as well, low socioeconomic category there, 116 compared to 196 at Tiquisic Brown. And then Tiquisic Brown, it's not a huge factor, but it does have a slightly higher capacity. It has about one additional classroom worth of capacity compared to Midnight Sun. And then there, the charts there at the bottom, you can see the, the percentage capacity in the event of the closure of either school. So that first far left column is the consolidation of Midnight Sun, actually Tiquisic Brown closing. So the far left with, it would be Midnight Sun remaining, and Midnight Sun would, would stand at 96% capacity. The middle column is if Midnight Sun were closed, Tiquisic Brown will be at 91 capacity. And then North Pole Elementary is right at 95, 96, so very similar regardless of which school were consolidated. So about a 5% capacity difference by, by having Midnight Sun as the consolidation candidate there in the North Pole area. And then finalizing that North Pole region, no impact to the number of transportation routes needed. Approximately $1.5 million in savings annually. That's a lower number than a couple of our regular-sized, the, the two other regular-sized elementaries due to the, the repurposing recommendation from administration. And I've said this at the listening sessions, I want to, I want to emphasize this point. There's also been a narrative that the district, that administration is closing a school in North Pole in order to repurpose it. Because there's a repurposing need, that's why we're closing a school in North Pole, and we, we want to push back on that. That's a, that's a false claim. The, there's two very separate determinations that administration made. The first one is, as I outlined earlier, whether or not it was viable to close a school in a specific region. If the answer is yes, we have a school on the recommend, the recommended list. And then after that, completely 100% separate from that decision on whether or not it's viable, is then what do we do with the, with the building? There's, there's three main options. One being to turn the building back to the borough. The borough technically is the owner of all the school buildings, and the school district is a tenant through an MOA. The second option is to mothball a building, shut the lights off, turn the heat down, and, and lock the doors and keep the building. Or repurpose the building for various needs and purposes for, for students and, and the district at large. So just want to emphasize two very completely separate decisions. Whether or not we're going to, to have a, a recommended consolidation in a geographic region. And then, secondly, completely separate, what do we do with the building then? And then moving to the west region, the consolidate, recommended elementary here is Pearl Creek Elementary. The, the key consideration here, the, the big one was the walk zones of the two other candidates in the region. So we see approximately 36 students in the walk zone at Pearl Creek compared to 80 in, at University Park and 173 at Wood River. And so those 80 students would require a couple of additional routes to, to bus at U Park if U Park were consolidated. And three, minimum of three up to possibly four buses, additional routes would be needed to bus Wood River students to, to a different location. So the zero to four population data, as well as economically disadvantaged, low socioeconomic student data also played into the factor, it is factors for Pearl Creek consolidation. And then the next slide, the building condition here, significant deferred maintenance on Pearl Creek. One, and it's the last item mentioned, but in my estimation in, in talking with our facilities department, is specifically that the building is not on the city utility system. And that makes the building extremely difficult to maintain for our maintenance department. And that, that, that factor cannot be understated. It's a, it's a big, a big factor that doesn't necessarily show up on a CIP list or deferred maintenance amounts. Just very difficult to maintain the Pearl Creek building. Projected savings, approximately $1.7 million. And then students would be relocated to Anne Ween, University Park, Wood River, and a small number to Weller Elementary.
And in the Central Fairbanks region, the recommendation is to close Hunter. I do want to point out that last year, when we were looking at school closures, we were not looking at an interior school. And that also was a difference that affected the consideration of Tiquisic, because at that time, the consideration to close Tiquisic would require moving students towards the central Fairbanks region. Now to do so and to close a school in the central Fairbanks region is not viable. So there are some, several differences between the considerations that we were making last year versus the considerations that we're facing this year. So as far as Hunter Elementary School, and within this region, there are things that are very similar across the schools that we're looking at. And there are things that we're really looking at what makes things a little bit different. So one of the things that makes them a little bit different is that Hunter Elementary School, although it has had a renovation, it, you know, the foundation of the school was built in 1956, and it is 36 years older than the next oldest elementary school in the region. Lad being built in 1992 and Denali being built in 2005. A remodel is different than an entire new building, so that is a, a difference there. Demographics, there is a lower anticipated population of upcoming school-age children in the Hunter area. We are seeing a decline of school-age children in general in the interior, you know, central Fairbanks area. But it is slightly greater at Hunter with about one-third of the age of students compared to the area around Denali Elementary School. And we have seen, you know, a sporadic enrollment, and this year we shot, saw a sharp decline in enrollment at Hunter. But it also matches the, the trend that you'll see at the end of this whole presentation today when we revisit the overall decline in enrollment in our district. So Hunter is certainly in there. As far as the demographics for socioeconomic students impacted, we know that there is going to be socioeconomic students impacted if we were to close Hunter, if we were to close Denali, if we were to close Anne Ween, if we were to close Lad. So that is not a significant different factor, although it's something that we have to consider how to support and wanting to make sure that the students that we do impact land in schools that have the supports that they continue to need. So we did consider it, but it wasn't something that changed one school versus another. Students would move from Denali, from Hunter to Denali Elementary School. We are considering what would it look like to have more students go to Barnett per the request of the board and interest from the community. go to Barnett, per the request of the board and interest from the community, and University Park Elementary School, where we also have previously had students in that area at one time went to U Park, then went back to Hunter, and now would be going back to U Park. Support for students would be maintained as Hunter Elementary School students, which is currently a title school, would be going to schools that also receive supports through either title funds, or being a magnet school, or DODI grants. And there's another comparison of the enrollments, if you were to close one school versus another, and the capacity that each of the schools have. Here's a demonstration of where students would flow to and the number of students. So Barnett Magnet School, if it were to be a K 500 students that would have originally been moved to Lad in our original proposal, we are offering a consideration for them to go to Barnett Magnet School. That does require Barnett Magnet School middle school students to go to either return to their neighborhood schools, or we have an option for them to have a priority status in the Lad middle school lottery. So Barnett has a walk zone. We would increase that walk zone, and we would provide some busing for the students previously districted to go to Lad, from Lad to go to Barnett. And here's the impact for the Barnett Middle School students. Approximately 135 Barnett students currently in grades five through seven, because the eighth graders would be going on to high school, would move to their original neighborhood middle school, or that we would like to provide them an opportunity to have a priority status at Lad Elementary School. And we believe that based on interest, we could increase support to the Lad elementary or middle school magnet model, and perhaps be able to take everybody from Barnett that's interested in being there. So of course, that is a little bit based on interest, and we would hope to maybe increase the support for their enrichment programs that they have There is a walk zone consideration. We have heard from the community that there's a concern that students that don't have access to busing and currently get themselves to school without busing and transportation, or with transportation, that that would actually be a limitation. So we've done a little bit of investigating, and I'm going to turn it over to Sarah, who's been our attendance and absenteeism expert this year.
Thank you. So just, yes, to, you know, the question of if students at Hunter are no longer able to simply walk to school, but if they did have to rely on a bus for their transportation, we did look into it a little bit more. This slide just shows you specifically for the schools in that area, for the students who are identified as walk zone within that 1.5-mile radius. There are already students that I believe Mr. Hinton has spoken about are eligible to get a bus. So we divided it between students in that area who would not be bus-eligible, or who are currently not bus-eligible versus are bus-eligible because it's not safe for them to walk, or there's other factors that need to be taken into consideration. In looking at some research, of course, this is just one point of research, it's taken out of Michigan, I don't know who has, they were perfect, taken out of Michigan, looking at the 50 largest districts in Michigan. This is one example that was specifically looking at bus ridership eligibility and an impact on student attendance. So two factors in terms of student attendance that we're looking at, one being the first bullet point of just an attendance rate. So looking at attendance rates for students, and specifically economically disadvantaged students, looking that having the ability, being bus-eligible, could increase their attendance rate by 0.63%, which is really just one day. However, the factor that we've been looking at most closely when we've been looking at attendance, because that's what we've seen most closely tied to student achievement, is what's called chronic absenteeism. So we may refer to it as regular attendance. A lot of other data calls it when students are chronically absent. And what that means is that they're missing 10% or more of the school days that they are eligible to attend. And so this particular study found that there was a relationship between students being bus-eligible and their probability of being chronically absent. And it actually decreased their probability of being chronically absent by 3.8 percentage points on average. So between 2 to 4% more likely to be regular attenders, which we have seen both across the nation, and Dr. Ott has done research in our own student populations, that students who are regular attendees, meaning they're present 90% or more of the school year, are more likely to see success in school in a lot of different ways. So the next looks at just kind of our schools, our Title I schools who do have that higher rate of economically disadvantaged students, and then just looking at that. The research does say a few different items that could be taken into consideration. It does help establish a routine for students to have that bus ridership time that they're taking. We know that reliability of buses could be a concern. However, in the Hunter area, that isn't an outlying area, may not be as impacted by those delays or missing buses.
And so then reviewing building capacities, and this top, this next slide is with the Barnett K 5 option. In this middle column, you have current, as of December 6th, enrollment numbers and capacities to the various elementary schools in the district. The far-right column would be percentage capacities for administration's recommended plan. Want to just point out the percent economically disadvantaged columns in both categories. There was a tremendous amount of work that administration did to try to balance those numbers as much as possible. Not possible to get them completely equaled out and the same from school to school, but we did a lot of work and feel like we had some positive results on having as best possible distribution of those economically disadvantaged students as possible. And then the next slide is our middle school capacities, actually middle school and high school capacities with that Barnett K 5 option. And I won't go into a lot of detail there, but same concepts apply.
Okay, and that brings us to our first pause for questions. So that was mostly a recap with a little bit of information per the request of the school board. So this is our first pause for questions. So I have Mrs. Hardy, and then Mrs. Dulian, and then Mr. Doran. Go ahead, Mr. Doran.
Sorry to jump in, but I wanted to let the board members know and others listening, though I was gone for most of January, this was travel that I committed to a year ago before we had meetings scheduled. So, but I wanted to say first, I've watched all the videos and done some updates. Otherwise, want to say thank you to my fellow board members, and to the administrative team for all the work you've put in, and to the community for all that they've done, and coming forward for hearings. Thank you. And you've done a good job. I'm proud of you. Several of you mentioned you were thinking of me as you asked your questions, and so, good job. The other thing that I wanted to say as a general observation is, I've been around a long time, and specifically on closing schools, I can go back six years, and when Dr. Gabor was superintendent, she raised the question first, and asked a consultant to take a look at closing schools. Her intent was excellent. The consultant information was poor, but it was a conversation that was trying to be started. Subsequently, actions were taken in taking a look at schools. Very little information was brought forward as to what those choices, and very little discussion actually took place on that. Last year was a breath of fresh air, and it's current administration bringing together some information and such, and the discussion by the board broader, and community involvement to those. But I do want to say, when I look at this information, I really need to applaud everyone for the job you've done. The wealth of information is phenomenal. And whether, I'll say, I agree or disagree with any particular conclusions or recommendations, the effort, I think, really needs to be recognized, and that's what I wanted to say. I've been through enough of these conversations, and some of these conversations actually go back decades. This is the most information that I have seen. So I wanted to just preface that, and thank you for letting me share those comments, and put me in the queue in the normal way.
Thank you, Mr. Doran, and we're happy to have you back tonight. Mrs. Hardy.
One was just clarification, and then I have questions after that if I can. Back when you were discussing the closure of TIC, and I just wanted to make sure I heard you right, or if we had closed TIC, that would have required over 100 students from Midnight Sun to have to move. So it would displace students to make room for students. So that was, it would cause like a ripple effect, upsetting more students.
Yes, that's correct. So Midnight Sun was incapable of taking all of the Tiquisic displaced students, and so that would have caused a domino effect across the North Pole region. And at that time, there was, it was going to put, because Midnight Sun's little bit smaller capacity, it was going to put schools right at 100%, possibly over 100% depending on the redistricting that was done. And so it provided some space to go to the Fairbanks areas, Mr. Plott mentioned. There wasn't a school in the area. We weren't looking at that area at that time. And so that was proposed by administration. As I mentioned, that was rejected by the Tiquisic Brown community.
Yeah, I remember that last year. It was, thank you. That's more I've been hearing, and we've been receiving a lot of questions, why is the change? And that helps answer some of that. And I've got more, so you can put me back in the queue. But can you go into more detail about what kinds of additional maintenance are required due to Pearl Creek not being on the utility system? What does that actually mean in like, our FMDs departments work?
Yeah, so one of the big ones, I'll mention a big one, and then if we need further clarification, we have Ms. Carry on here from our facilities department. But they're not on the, for example, the city water system. We have wells and pumps that require constant maintenance. We've had issues with toilets flushing. We've had to, I don't know if we've had to outright cancel, you know, vacate the school, but we've had issues with bathrooms and running water and toilets flushing and whatnot. Look to Ms. Carry on if she wants to add any additional information. But that's one big example. And then just the systems, because the school is not on the city utility system, they're just so much more difficult for our maintenance team to maintain. It's just, it's more difficult.
Follow-up?
Yeah.
Do we have any information on the actual, like, additional man-hours we've put into keeping those systems afloat versus a school on city systems?
I do have that information, and I can send that over to you through Dr.
Okay, up next, Ms. Dulian.
Thank you for the opportunity to have this work session, and also for the expansive information that was added today, and also reviewing. We are, we have a decision of magnitude next Tuesday, on the 4th. And my North Star through this process has been, how can we uplift the whole? I'm going to re, I'm going to list again the things that have already been cut by the school district. We've cut elementary band and orchestra. We've cut and almost eliminated our extended learning program, which is known as the gifted and talented. We've cut student activities and sports. We've laid off teachers, educators, and have also increased class sizes. We've closed schools. What we have left is to protect what's happening in the classrooms, and to potentially, hopefully, get to a place where we can invest in that. But our backs are in a corner, and I fully understand the need to consolidate schools because of our declining enrollment, especially in in-person attendance. However, I have, I'm going to talk a little bit about Central Fairbanks, which already has seen school closures in the previous round with Nordale and Joy. I am having a very difficult time getting to a place where Hunter Elementary, and specifically those students, would be subjected to another closure. This is a work session, and so I'm not sure how we can have this conversation in a way that, you know, leads to our board meeting next week. But the data point for me is, is that this recommendation to close Hunter, one of the data points that rose that school to the top was a one-year enrollment decline. However, when you look at the 20-year enrollment trend for Hunter, it's pretty static. It's actually about a 5% variation. So knowing that that school serves a, the majority of our students who are economically disadvantaged, who are experiencing childhood traumatic events, adverse childhood traumatic events, knowing that that school, you know, serves those that we cannot leave behind, I'd like to have a discussion tonight around that one in particular. I also think it's really important that we have a discussion around every single school tonight, because they all are worth a thorough review, and for us to really peel back the data on every single one.
We'll go to Mr. Doran.
Thanks for this information. And so, a couple of things that came up, and also came up in testimony, I wanted, we cited information about the per-student cost, like Sault Ste. Two Rivers versus other schools. But we get a small school allocation, because we know smaller schools cost more. So we have, we get an extra. How has that been factored into the expectations? Because it sets up an unfair comparison.
Yeah, so that's reconciled in the lower, the savings are lower in those buildings. So that's, that's why the savings are lower, is because there is a higher multiplier, as you mentioned, Mr. Doran. At the same time, the closure of the schools still generate between $1 million and $1.1 million in savings. So that's the bottom line, where that's where the rubber meets the road. Those are the savings that the district would realize.
Okay, but the cost per student, that's being cited as one of the reasons for it to be closed. I just want to have it clear for the public that that's somewhat misleading, because we get extra money for those because the state recognizes they're smaller.
I, I'll respond. Yes, I hear, I hear the point that you're making, Mr. Doran. What I would, what I would counter with is that the additional revenue that we receive through the state model, because it's a small school situation, does not meet the higher cost per student that we, the district spends on running those schools. But I hear your point.
Okay, and that's helpful. So it covers, though it's $12,000 difference cited here, the state extra allocation might only cover...
Yeah, I don't have those numbers offhand, but yeah.
All right. Well, I think that might be helpful for public. If I can do one, put me back in the queue. Also, just to get some clarity, it was testified tonight that students at Sault Ste. might be on the bus an hour and a half, two hours. Do we have the actual ride times? I don't know if you've been able to get that.
So we, last meeting talked about route times and average ride times. Today, we had a conversation about actuals. I don't think we've been able to pull that together because it's only been a couple hours since we met, but we'll get that to the board. But I do think it's important, what was stated in testimony was inaccurate in terms of multiple hours in both the morning and the evening for ride times for Sault Ste. That's not the case. And ride times actually become, come in lower than route times oftentimes. And so we can share that information with the board as well.
Great, thank you.
And Mr. Hinton just informed me the maximum ride time is 64 minutes.
For, of all, for Sault Ste. Okay.
We're going to go to Mr. Burgess, and then to Ms. Hardy.
I'm sure I'll have additional questions, but I'll start with an easy one, I hope. And that's going back to Hunter and the, the sharp decline in enrollment that was cited, is, are the numbers based on Is, are the numbers based on the 10-day count or on actual current enrollment?
I think those are actually based on our October count, the 20-day count, which is the official one that we go to the state, yeah.
Okay, Mrs. Hardy.
Kind of along the same vein as what Mr. Dorn was saying. And this is more of a left field question. How would the funding and like what we actually provide to students look like if they were funded more at 11,000 in that ballpark for students versus what we currently do for Salter and Two Rivers? Like, kind of to let people understand the difference of what that would mean, like actual services to students out there.
It's rather theoretical, but I think I'm picking up what you're saying is our other neighbor, larger neighborhood schools, it would almost be double the amount of funding that those schools could potentially have, which could lower class sizes, continue to restore programs that have been cut such as ELP, music. And so a reinvestment could be made back into those schools if we received that amount of funding per student.
Kind of going the other way, like the fact that we provide more to those communities so that they have something equitable, the same as what we're providing to our in-town neighborhood schools, but because there's a smaller population. So they have these other services and that's why it costs so much.
Yeah, I think Mr. DeGraw could talk about fixed costs, which he's talked about in the past of, regardless of the size of the school, there are fixed costs that come with it. And so smaller schools are generally more expensive to run because of the fixed costs associated with them.
Yeah, that's, that's accurate, Dr. Minor. It's, it's just, I, I, I have history in a small school district of 500 total kids, you know? And just, it's, it's costlier to educate students in rural, more remote areas. That's just a fact of life due mainly to those, those fixed costs that are required. Another way to look at, you know, just pondering on Mr. Dorn's comments, another way to look at it. And again, I, I don't like doing this because this is, this isn't a very emotional topic and we're talking nuts and bolts numbers and I hate it. I want to preface that, these comments with that. My heart is with those rural communities. Like I say, I have, I have history and background with a very small rural district. And so this is near and dear to my heart. So I don't want folks to think that I'm callous or cold. But another way to look at it is the district is going to realize $1 to $1.1 million in savings. And with 50 to 60 kids being relocated to a new building as opposed to 1.7 or 1.5 million by displacing 300 to 400 students. So you see kind of the, the relative nature. It's very lopsided because it's just costlier to run and provide education to students in rural, remote areas. And that's, it's unfortunate. It's, it's, but it's just the, the cold numbers, so to speak. And like I say, I, I don't want to, I don't want to diminish the emotional impact that's, that's going on here. But that's, that's how the numbers spoke to us and that's why we have this, this information as a factor for consideration.
And just a follow-up along that same veins, and thank you. I, I don't want the humanity of these decisions to be lost in dollars and cents.
I agree.
I don't think anyone at these tables doesn't feel the enormity of what this means for communities. Along those same veins, so there's a small school multiplier. Their district cost factor is the same as Fairbanks, even though they are what we would think of a more remote rural community, but we don't receive any extra funds.
Correct, yeah. The only, the only spot in the formula, you're correct, Ms. Hardy. The only spot is the, what Mr. Dorn referenced, the school size multiplier. So the school size multiplier happens first and then the geographic region factor of 7%. And yes, all of our schools have the 7% applied equally.
Mr. Dorn.
Did Ms. Plott have something?
Oh, sorry, Ms. Laplante, I didn't see you. Go ahead.
I, I think this is another part of what Ms. Hardy was trying to get at is that we believe that there's a certain level of education and opportunities that should be provided at an elementary school. And by providing those at all of our schools, including our very small schools, we, it does increase the cost. And if we were to start cutting those back, could we get to a place where we were a little bit more aligned with the amount we get per student? We might be able to, it might be closer, but the level of things that we would have to reduce at that school would deeply cut into the experience of the education. So, I mean, already we struggle, but it's our belief that they should have access to librarians. They should have access to PE. They should have access to music. They should have access to a school nurse and a nutrition systems and all those things. And that we shouldn't just say, well, it's a small school, you get one teacher. We're, we're trying to provide a level of education. We can provide that level of education at a very nearby school and in fact, hopefully even improve upon that. So there's multiple reasons that, again, we believe that this is not only cost effective, but will benefit students.
Thank you, Ms. Laplante. Mr. Dorn.
And we may want to get into this a little bit later, but it is cited in, in this packet of slides or this section of slides on Title I likely schools. Could you talk a little bit about, I mean, as a rough reference, 40% is the, is the magic number. Often for Title I schools, it does not guarantee you Title I funding. When I look at the list and some of the data, actually Barnett, under what's been presented thus far, would become probably a Title I school. And Ween is just below that. But there are some shifts. And I know we don't know until we get the actual count at the beginning of the year. And you may be spared tonight if I keep losing my voice. I'll have an extension to my vacation.
Poor Tim.
But if you, if you could address that Title I, because that slide was here, if you want to wait.
I think we should wait. Brianna Gray will have quite a bit of information on student support services and Title I. And then if you have additional questions after she's been able to present, we can come back to that.
Okay, if I might do another and put me back in the queue. Question that's in here and that came up at previous meetings. The zero to four data was referenced originally as the 2022 census, which doesn't exist as such. If it's talking about the US Census, it was 2020. There were some delays in getting information out. Just for credibility, do we know? He may have used 2022 information from the borough. Is that, where, what is the onus of that? So we don't hit a credibility issue.
Yeah, thank you for the question. So as you mentioned, there was a delay in getting out the data for the 2020 census and it actually didn't come out until 2022. And so those were the numbers he was referencing there was from the 2020 census. But that came out in 2022.
Okay, follow-up. It might be worth asking him if he did any update. I've had experience with that researcher.
Yes.
And that's been a problem. It's still valuable. And the Borough, I know, has done some real analysis and maybe some updates, but that's five years old. So I think it's a good data point, but just in the big picture.
He had done some minimal updates from 2023, from data from the American Community Survey, which does regular updates on top of the census. And so there were some minimal updates at that point in time.
I'd like to remind board members, I'm getting some requests. The public is having a hard time hearing. So if we could make sure we speak up and speak into our mics so that everybody can hear the questions and answers that are being asked tonight, that would be great. And with that, Mrs. Dullian.
Thank you. I have a clarifying question for the West Region, which is Pearl Creek. I think I should also state for full disclosure that that is where my children live, or my children attend. The considerations for the Pearl Creek closure in particular. So when I look at, at that, I'm looking at minimum transportation impacts. Only 36% of Pearl Creek students are in a walk zone compared to 80 at U Park and 173 at Wood River. It, it seems to me like when I look at the West Region that one of the factors that rose that school up to the top was transportation costs. I understand that we also subsidize our overall transportation costs by $3.5 million out of our general fund. That could be going to, and correct me if I'm wrong in this, that could be going to our schools, lowering PTR, keeping a school open, however we would want to spend that. So we already are in the hole about 1, 3.5 million because we don't receive enough transportation funding. Are my notes correct from previous meetings when we spoke about transportation? That the impact of selecting another school in the Western Region would increase transportation costs by about 500,000? Am I correct in that understanding?
Yes, there would be a significant increase to transportation costs if you selected another school in the Western Region. And I think you identified one of the key indicators for that region. There's been a lot of talk about building condition. But I think if you stripped that away and you look at the other factors that are on that slide that talks about the Western Region, those are actually more important indicators. And one of those is certainly that walk zone and the impact that that has on families. And then going further, the transportation impacts and dollar figures associated with providing transportation for students.
Thank you. Mr. Burgess.
Thanks. And I, this is really a follow-up to my earlier question. I should have just followed up then, but. But so if, if enrollment that is, it's described here and the enrollment decline at Hunter is based on the 20-day count, have we seen changes in enrollment since then? And is that typical at Hunter or at any other schools?
Yes, and yes. I mean, we, we do see enrollment changes. We look, we're looking at larger trends. I mean, so yes, there was a decline this year. But really, I think when we look at the slide for the declining enrollment across the entire district, that's the most compelling thing. So yes, there will have been changes and there will have been changes at other schools. Schools typically start at a peak, then they go down and then they peak again in the spring. So we, we see a pattern that carries throughout the year. And I think that it's important to understand that the declining enrollment that we're seeing across the district is like overall the more, the most compelling part. Like we, we have to close schools and that, that declining enrollment, it wouldn't particularly matter. All the students that we're talking about would go to another school. And, but, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Dr. Minor.
And I think to Ms. Dullian's point earlier, the struggle of considering Hunter or a school in Central Fairbanks was definitely difficult for our team as well. But when you start to look at not only current enrollment trends, but then that zero to four story, my fear is being right back at this table in a couple of years, if we don't close Hunter, and that we're back to considering Hunter or Denali. And so because of the population trends and the differences in housing availability for our students there. And so there definitely has been a shift in Central Fairbanks. And that's why you have seen, you know, Joy, I think, was called out earlier because of those demographic trends. And, and here we are a couple of years later, also considering it again because of the shifting demographics within the borough. And so while it is very difficult to consider another centrally Fairbanks school, I think it's an important consideration, just given the, you know, the potential positive impacts it has on all of our students if we do decide to close five schools within the district.
Ms., Mr. Burgess, follow-up?
No follow-up. I do have a different question, but you can.
You could ask one more if you'd like.
So thinking about the discussion around the rural schools and the fixed costs there, my understanding is that some of those fixed cost positions are currently unfilled at, at those schools. And I know we budget based on position, based on need. But would it be, are there alternative models that could be run out there to save those costs? I think you kind of addressed this earlier, but I just wanted to follow up.
Yeah, so certainly, Mr. Burgess, there are alternative models that can be run. It would just reduce the savings amounts that the district would realize. But yeah, we can look at different options and we've, we've talked about that behind the scenes. The net effect would be reducing the, the amount of savings.
And I do think it's important to go back to Ms. Laplante in the conversation and maybe restate. I, I think it's important for the board to consider, what is your minimal level of educational experience we're providing for our students? Because when you start to strip away some of those things, we get into minimal services that we're providing students when there are excellent schools down the road that can provide those things to our students. So depending on kind of what the baseline would be for the board, we could provide, you know, updated figures as to what that would cost for the school. But remember, these are pretty rural and remote schools and they're operating fairly efficiently as they are with large combined classes and minimal services as it stands.
Mrs. Dullian.
Yes, I have, I have two. To that, I kind of want to just add one thing to Dr. Minor, what you just said. And I think it's important that we say that for Two Rivers and Salter, the, the schools that we would be moving them into are not really just down the road. I met with the Two Rivers family and there is a concern about, you know, what happens if there's a sick child and they have to do a pickup in the middle of the day? It's, it's about a 21-mile drive. Their cost of gas alone, if they choose not to bus, is going to go from about $800 a year to about $4,000 a year. And, and so I don't want to, I, I need to say that publicly because this is impacting people's lives. This is impacting the amount of time that students have with their families. And we know that that time is important, especially in the elementary age. I think for all, for all people, but especially in those for early formative years. Okay, so my question, again, is, is really going to focus on, for North Pole, I want to talk about North Pole for a second. Could we, we, you stated that we're not looking at TICAC because we wanted to keep TICAC Brown into a North Pole feeder and there was strong feedback from the community last year, keep us in a, keep us in a feeder for North Pole. However, then my question is, is there a scenario where you could still close that school as was planned last year and keep them also in a North Pole feeder by redrawing district lines in a certain way? Or is it just that if we close TICAC, we're moving, we're shifting more students from Midnight Sun over to North Pole Elementary and then all of TICAC over? And, and then would transportation also increase?
Not sure about the transportation component, but what you just described, the domino effect would occur. So the net, the net impact would be impacting more students.
Okay.
And I think it, I should mention, we didn't have it in the talking points, but the district has repurposing needs that it didn't have one year ago. And that wasn't in the slides. And so that, that was a factor as well. So we have the Star of the North program. We vacated the lease at that building. And there, that program needs a home as well. So just as I mentioned, it was geography within the geographic region. That was, that's another representation of geography being an important factor. But yes, that there would be a significant domino effect and that the amount of students would increase if, with closing TICAC Brown versus Midnight Sun.
Yeah, I think just for a follow-up comment, I understand the need. And so this is for the community, you know, I thank the administration for putting forth all of the census data and then also just the data around how our borough is growing. I thank the mayor for talking about that at our, at our meeting last week on the 21st. And North Pole is the largest growing community in Alaska right now. So I understand the need to still maintain a. So I understand the need to still maintain a building there so that we can grow. However, I think that we could do that with any one of the three, but it's, thank you for clarifying on the shift in the domino effect of what would happen if we selected Ticasic over Midnight Sun. Thank you. Mr. Doran.
Yeah, let's request that the capacity impact chart that we have in the other regions, that we get that for the West Region was left out of that. And I do want to take a moment to just say, thank you very much for looking at a regional view, which also helps in the overall big view of looking at attendance boundaries and balancing those out. They had been looked at really for almost 30 years. But related then to the question just recently, is, a lot of these buildings will go to 90% capacity. Can you address that in terms of sustainability? And I take the perspective of 90% is pretty darn close, you know? And that we have lived through times where we've had many schools over 100%. And, you know, it was led to building schools. I want to look at our long-term plan. So if you could address that a little bit.
Yes, I'd be happy to. We did look back historically at the capacities of our schools and actually found in 2007 that that was another time that we had schools at higher capacity. At that time, we had fewer charter schools available for families, and we didn't have as many families also choosing virtual or, you know, homeschooling options. So those options have continued to grow. And with the long-term trend of declining enrollment and declining, you know, families in our community, we would love to see school, you know, our schools grow. We feel like we have some good safety nets in hand, including keeping of Denali or keeping of Nordale as a building that we still have, keeping of Midnight Sun as a school that we still have. So should there be growth in the Central Region or the North Pole Region, we would have those to reopen. And we have operated at higher than what we are projecting to be at very comfortably for years in the past and still had capacity for all of our special education programs. I know that there had been a concern about, you know, using up all the available spaces and not having space for the special education programs, and we very, very carefully looked at those things. So your concerns are valid, but we feel like we have carefully looked at them and that we will be within a reasonable enrollment for each school.
So if perhaps, follow-up on this, a charter school would close, we can absorb them readily, easily?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Maple.
I have a clarifying question following up on Mr. Burgess's question. From what I gathered from that, if there was board interest, you know, more collectively, there could be more information shared on other models for some of those rural schools. And I don't know that I'm asking for that, but could, could you very briefly tell me what, I don't know what we're talking about, and I want to have some concept of what that is that he would be asking for, or we would.
Sure. I think if there was a directive to look at offering fewer services than what we typically offer at most of our neighborhood schools, taking off the expectation that there would be music, taking off the expectation that there would be PE, taking off the expectation that there would be a counselor, that there would be a nurse, maybe reducing the administration to a head teacher, reducing the number of teachers we have as a whole. The more that you reduce, the more you would have to look at an alternative model, but you would also get at those cost savings. So I think that's what we would be looking at, is where can you reduce and just not offer things the same? You know, I mean, it's already a little different because in some cases we have, you know, somebody being the counselor and the music teacher and keeping the library going. I mean, so, and that's because we've had those staffing issues, so they've had to be resourceful and creative. And I want to acknowledge that the communities in both areas have stepped up and provided incredible enrichment opportunities. So I think that should the communities want to engage in that, they would absolutely be able to offer enriching, enriching opportunities to their students because that's what they already do. But we would have to make a decision, you know, at the directive of the board to not provide the same kind of services that we currently provide at our neighborhood schools. And maybe even special education services would not be able to be provided there. I mean, I don't know to what level you would take it.
Thank you. Ms. Dullian. Thank you. And if I, this isn't the right time to ask this question, that's okay. But it has, it was brought up tonight in testimony. It definitely was a question of mine. I also served as, on the Budget Committee along with Mr. Doran. And one of the things that was brought forth to the Budget Committee was, how would you balance the budget? And school consolidation rose to the top as being one of those things that the Budget Committee, which is comprised of educators, staff, community members and such, said, yes, we should be doing that. And looking at the enrollment, one of the things that was put forth to the Budget Committee was consolidation of elementary schools, also high schools. Right now, I know that we're looking at elementary schools because of that enrollment decline. But I think for the public, it's important, and even for me as well, why have we not looked at any high schools in this consolidation framework?
Yeah, I think it's a great question and one that I believe we've talked about. So if you're looking in North Pole, we have one high school there. Ielson was recently consolidated into North Pole in the Fairbanks region. If you look at West Valley and Lathrup, they're not quite small enough yet to consolidate into one building. And so that's the factor there. I know the community has called out Hutch. I feel like Hutch is unique in that it does provide our career and technical education options for our Fairbanks students. And so there would be a huge loss for our students if we closed Hutch as a facility. West Valley and Lathrup are not able to duplicate what is available currently at Hutch. That would take millions of dollars of capital improvements from the borough to have that happen. There have been some conversations about potentially doing something different at Hutch in the future to offer better access for all of our Fairbanks students to Hutch to ensure that it's a viable program. Now, I'll say, that's not necessarily a cost savings, but it is an improvement. And so one of the things after we get over or through this consolidation conversations and the budget cycle as part of that strategic planning process and implementation into next year, is talking about things like Hutch and the way that we might want to re-envision it to ensure that we've got more access for our students for career and technical education. And I don't think I can understate the importance of Hutch for our community and for our state, given the labor shortages that we already experienced and the call for more training coming of high school students. Hutch really is providing that for a lot of our students that can then readily enter the workforce. And so without a lot of capital improvements into West Valley and Lathrup to duplicate those services, it's not able to be done at this point in time.
Is there any more questions from the board at this time, or do we want to continue through slides? Mr. Doran.
Somewhat related to the last question, and I do want that on the list, secondary review and consideration later. As I looked at the regional maps, I was surprised in the centralized region that two schools were left off the map, Nordale and Barnett. They are schools in those regions. We have had the question about what these magnets are doing. Hutch is one of them. Three and a half years ago, it was brought before the administration to the previous CSA that Hutch was undergoing a review about what their focus was, what their magnet model was. I know there's been some conversations. It has not happened. We need to do it. Barnett has been in a similar situation. And the CSA at that point was, indicated a surprise of what the original magnet for Barnett was, which has not been in play for maybe 15 years. And every principal that I've talked with since the founding principle has said, oh, we have to change this. And three and a half years ago, the administration said, you know, we have to figure out what this magnet is. So prefaced, or in the context of saying, I have visited Barnett. It is a great school. It is impressive what they're doing, but it needs to be on the list, and I am very glad to see it on the list this year, at this time. Going to a K-5 magnet, what is the magnet? Putting things on the table. It doesn't have an attendance area except for small. I am very glad to see in the plan as it's developed over the last few weeks, Hunter students not going to Lad. We did that with them in going to Joy. Parents can't walk there. They can't get there. There has been an historical connection between the Hunter neighborhoods and Barnett prior to the closing of Barnett and then the establishment of Barnett Magnet. So making that part of that attendance area, that connection, I think is really important. I'd raise the question, if it's not a magnet, what that magnet is, we have, we don't know. Move Hunter into Barnett. Just putting it out there. I do think, and what has been said, referenced quickly is strategic planning. We have not had that conversation. What I am thrilled about over the last several weeks, when I look back at testimony and things, the idea of a magnet, the idea of a theme. Two Rivers put effort into a homestead theme this year. We have a history in this district of looking at focus, theme, magnets, be it as you want. We have room in virtually all our schools to have additional students. I think that, and not getting bogged down into this year, but just really to this conversation tonight, but when we get to strategic planning, actually looking and building upon the ideas that people have brought forth to the table, that have said, hey, can we do things in our schools that will attract people? And I can argue, actually, every principal I've talked to, one of the questions I was asked, what's next? They and their team, their families have a plan or an idea that could be developed and that we don't, that we empower schools to look at those opportunities. And so I just, mainly my observation is, I think the conversation is right. I think that we do have some things that we can do. Nordale and Barnett are schools, and they, but they don't have really an attendance area. But all our schools have room for out-of-attendance and for opportunities to develop. And I'm just really hoping and will continue to promote that the ideas that have been brought forth over the last several weeks, but have been percolating for longer, that we look at how that, we can capitalize on that and provide those opportunities. So maybe observation more than, more than question, but I'm glad that we have these pieces on here, and they can be done at minimal to no cost. But I do have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Doran.
We talk about enrollment numbers. I have a different high peak for district numbers. When I asked this afternoon, Rebecca was very good, be able to go back to, I think it's 2002, 2003, and gave us a high enrollment in the district of 15,140. My reference is 16,000-plus. So it might have predated that. But I think that's an important enrollment number total, K-12, or pre-K-12 actually, because it highlights how many seats we are down. And it's, a lot of, most of it has to do with population, not student drop in, or students leaving our schools. But our population in the borough is down and the state is down, and then demographically. But a question particularly that I had on enrollment, elementary numbers relative to tonight, is, and it was brought up, do our enrollment drop in elementary include the sixth graders? Or was that adjusted to say these were the numbers K-5, then, and these are the numbers K-5 today?
So I think it's important to understand that we've seen the enrollments drop since the sixth grade left. So there was, so yes, there was that anticipated, expected drop, and then there has continued to be decline after that, that has increased in pace. And we did look at, could we consolidate a middle school? And that would, we can't consolidate a middle school without returning sixth graders to the elementary schools. We did look at whether you could do K-8 schools, and that requires incredible amounts of changes. And trying to stay forward-thinking and try to make decisions that look like wise decisions when you have hindsight, you know, 10 or 15 years from now, there's a lot of things to factor in. Moving the sixth grade to the middle schools has overall been a benefit to students there. It's been a benefit to the middle schools. It has filled those schools up to capacity. So we looked at all those things, and yes, there has still been a decline even after the anticipated, of course, decline.
Follow-up. All right, all right. Go ahead.
Yeah, the only additional thing, and I think we've talked about this a little bit, if we did return sixth graders to elementary schools, the one middle school that you could close in the Fairbanks region is Randy Smith due to the size of the middle schools. And so I wanted that on the table because as teams had evaluated that, we know Randy Smith is a popular option for middle school families. And so that does change the conversation at times for some of those families that want their students to continue to go to Randy Smith.
Right, okay. So follow-up. I absolutely agree with what you've both said. And I know in the North Pole area, we have, there has been some back and forth. We don't necessarily want to get into that, and I'm not advocating return of sixth grade to elementary. But in terms of numbers and credibility and transparency, that you have done a tremendous job. I think it was a valid observation. And what I understand then, there was not an adjustment in looking at those numbers, but it would be worth looking. And I don't know that it makes any difference in terms of, you know, I mean, it's still how many seats we have, how many we're going to fill, what we're going to have left for growth and that type of thing. But it might be a good point of information because it was a valid point that was raised.
I think it's important to understand, we're not targeting elementary schools because somehow they are uniquely declining in enrollment compared to our schools as a whole. We are having to face closure of schools because there are fewer students attending our schools because there are fewer people living in our community. It's not a targeting of elementary schools for some particular decline that they're experiencing unique to any other schools. It happens to be where we have the capacity to handle that important and unfortunate task. It happens to be where we think we can increase and improve education for students, just like we were able to increase and improve education for students when we did move sixth graders to the middle schools and infused them with more students so they could have more teachers and they could offer a few, a few more things. Just like education, I think, did improve for students. Just like education, I think, did improve for students that were able to access North Pole High School. So it's not a targeting of elementary schools. It's really a response to the overall decline in enrollment and our population.
Very brief follow-up. Yes, you're right. But we did know, when the board decided to move sixth grade to middle school, that the next closures were going to be elementary. We've known that.
Thank you, Mr. Dorn. Mrs. Dulean?
Thank you so much. And I'm glad I made dinner for everyone tonight. Might have been because Mr. Dorn's back. But anyway, so I just want to talk a little, but thank you, I just need to bring some levity to this very difficult conversation. Okay, so my question is, if Hunter were to remain a school, it's at 66% capacity. I appreciate that we're going into a more intensive strategic planning process, so that we can really vet some of the ideas that have come forth about how do we uplift our student success across the whole and offer unique opportunities that might draw students back from correspondence programs, from out-of-area attendance? With Hunter in particular, hypothetically, if that school were to remain open at 66%, I know that we've had some conversations with some of our charter schools who are privately leasing buildings right now. Could there be a, could there be a scenario where a elementary school that is run as a neighborhood school also houses, like a wing of it, could house a charter school? Is that a possibility?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think that there's anything legally that would prevent that. You know, we would have to take a look at what the charter schools' overall size is and charter, and whether or not that would fit within that space. But it's my understanding that, yes, that could be done.
Mr. Dorn?
Just an story, it has been done. Yeah. Chinook shared, had one part of a building, and she in elementary for a while, and then Tana satellite shared the building. So it could be done.
Any other questions from the board at this time? Seeing none, I did get a request for a quick five-minute recess. So if anybody would like to take a minute, use the restroom, the board will be back in five minutes. Five minutes.
Okay, welcome back. The board is now ready to return back to our work session. And I will turn the meeting back over to Assistant Superintendent Kate LaPlante and Chief Operations Officer Andy DeGraw.
All right, so this next section of the presentation will dive into a couple of different things, all of which impact and support and are focused around students. So should the board make the decisions to close the schools that we've recommended? We understand that there would be a lot of supports that are needed for our students and for our staff and for our families. And so I'm going to talk about what that kind of support would look like, and how we are prepared to help with that. And then also, we will be looking at what we hope to be the things that would maybe potentially be even improved, how education would look and feel for students next year after these changes are made. So I want to start off by acknowledging that transitions are difficult. We understand that students who face transitions, especially unexpected transitions, that it can be hard. But we do also know that there are anticipated, expected, sometimes even very joyfully look forward to transitions that students have in their education career, not from elementary to middle school, middle school to high school. And we have things in place already to support students facing those transitions that we can model and duplicate more. So we have elementary students that go to middle schools, and we have the, they get to go over to the schools and visit. They have counselors come over to their school and meet with them. Ms. Gillum, would you like to speak of any of those things? I know those are both things that you oversee quite a bit.
Absolutely. I think it's just important to note that we know students go through those transitions, and we want to make sure that oftentimes, the scariest part of the transition is the unknown. And so when we, you know, plan how we're going to support students through those transitions, it's really about how can we do the most that we can to make the unknown known? How can we make sure that students know what the school looks like, where their locker might be, where their classroom might be? So that piece, those, you know, kind of logistical pieces, and then also making sure they know the connections of the people they might be able to relate to in that school. So that's part of what we'll talk about next. How do we help make the unknown known and establish those connections early, so that students feel that sense of connection to the community?
So building on that, and also for anybody that has awareness or understanding of tiered support, we have anticipated things that we would do for all students facing this transition, supports that would be available to all the tier one, in this case, the green at the very top. So open houses, school visits, bus transportation to their new school, so that they can visit that school ahead of time. Tier two would be for a group of students that maybe need a little bit more than that, and we can tailor that by having smaller available tours, reaching out to families specifically, and having some additional things in place for families that maybe we know need additional support, including like maybe taxi rides to the school, so that they can attend the family events that are being hosted in the evenings, making sure that we don't miss any student. And then there could be tier three, you know, we do have students who need maybe more than one visit, maybe they need a personal, private tour of the school. Some of our special education students might need more than one visit to the school. They might need to go in the spring and again in the fall ahead of time. These are things that we already do for some students that are transitioning, and we really make sure to tailor it to that student's specific needs. But that's how we would have tiered supports. Again, Ms. Gillum, is there anything you'd like to add to those?
No, I think that was great. I was just going to also speak that as we've, as I know, as I worked through this process last year with the Benilson and the North Pole communities, so many of the great ideas came from speaking with those communities directly. So as we saw students get engaged in that process, that all came from the process as we started talking about how can we support students. And as, you know, talking through that, I think that those students can be such great ambassadors of their schools and help alleviate a lot of those fears and anxieties for students.
Thank you. So additional support action plans that we have in place include support for students and staff, prioritizing helping students at the closing schools feeling welcomed at their new receiving schools, a clear communication for families, making the unknown known, making it very clear everybody understands what the transition process looks like, where their new attendance area school would be, when their opportunity to visit that school is, when the family events are happening. A staff transition plan, making sure that staff have a clear understanding of how their assignments and opportunities to select where they would like to go, how that's going to happen. So that's, again, we know that supporting students means supporting staff. Staff are going to be able to support their students if they themselves feel taken care of and settled. So that's part of their plan. Transition funding, actually giving funding to the receiving schools in order to create a very welcoming environment. We know that a student that arrives at the school and receives a welcome bag and a new t-shirt that, you know, identifies that they are welcome there, and that there's acknowledgement of the school that they have been a community partner of. I know that Anderson Crawford, when it was the combined Anderson and Crawford Elementary School, they created a new shirt that had both the mascots on there, and that the students felt like they weren't so much leaving one school as the schools were combining. And so that kind of stuff is really helpful. And actually, having physical things that help the kids feel that connection is helpful. Spring open houses, the spring, also providing bus transportation and actually getting students to those schools during the day, student field trips. And then ongoing closing school support, providing dedicated resources and services to help students and families at the closing schools. And I'm going to ask Ms. Gray to step in here. I know her team has already created an incredible list of ideas and resources. I was in her office today and was taking a peek at some of them, so.
Yeah, absolutely. So I just want to acknowledge that support services, this is what we do. We are familiar with supporting students, supporting schools, supporting families, administrators. And in close collaboration with school principals, student support services is ensuring that all school consolidation information is communicated and distributed to families via emails, phone calls, and mail. We frequently call families just to make sure that they have support, and that they're familiar with who we are and who our programming, what our programming and services provide. And we are looking forward to providing books and fitted materials to families, and we will continue to remain proactive and respond to requests of support from schools as they come in.
And I'm working with Ms. Ann Kennedy, who is a counselor who had been at Anderson Crawford, and then a parent that also experienced a transition. And so she's working closely with me and the principals at the potentially impacted schools, and really helping think about what can we do at those schools to support the staff, to support the families and the students. Along with Ann, I'm also working with David Wright of Alaska Team Builders. He has volunteered his services to us as a support, and I think that's been very helpful as far as helping principals already begin thinking about what supports they need in order to support their student, their staff and their students. And that voluntary, that his offer of voluntary support would be there for schools as they, if the vote's made, and they are planning how to finish out this school year in a way that meets the needs of their staff and students and families, and how to be welcomed at the new school. So I appreciate that, that support from our community partners. And I think it's helpful to have, you know, an outside perspective, that we would also stand up biweekly meetings, and more frequently as needed, to make sure that all the transition logistics and technical support was well taken care of. We've learned a few things over the last consolidations, and we know that it is a lot of work to go through the physical act of closing the schools and taking care of all the stuff. And I think when I said earlier, this, through this process, that this is a people-first process, building second, that will be our motto there, that we will take care of the students and the staff and the people involved in this. Doesn't mean that we're going to ignore the responsibility of taking care of the stuff and the buildings, but our focus will be on the people first. And by taking a staged approach to the handing over of the buildings, that allows us a little bit more time to take care of the stuff after the people are well taken care of. So I'm going to move the people are well taken care of. So, I'm going to move us into the academic improvements that we hope to see. So, we, we are doing all of this difficult work for the really explicit intended hope that we are able to improve services and the experience, the educational experience for students. And so, I'm going to invite Mr. Beam to talk a little bit about what he anticipates of being able to improve through teaching and learning.
Thank you very much. Before I get started, I do want to recognize the fact that, because I'm feeling it honestly, it might be a little difficult to hear about positives when we're in this situation right now. So, I'm a little uneasy, and I'm not generally uneasy, but I'm uneasy about this because it's, it's hard to kind of hear these things. But it's also important to hear what some of the silver linings may be of what we're doing. The first slide, it's kind of a title slide, and we're going to go very quickly through this and get to the meat. So, the first two bullet points about with more students in schools, it'll be easier to balance class loads across the grade bands, combined with more classes that will align to our targeted PTR. We're going to see a few slides about that in detail. And then we'll come back, and then I'm going to talk more about fewer split grades and what split grades are and how those impact things.
So, we've talked about this, but this, I think, helps illustrate it. So, we've explained, we've talked about the fact that at, at smaller school populations, it can become tricky to hit that target PTR, people-to-teacher ratio, and we end up with classes that are sometimes quite above PTR and sometimes quite below PTR. And these are very real examples. This one happens to be examples from Anne Ween Elementary School. I think these numbers were a little bit earlier, so don't, please don't think that these are like today's numbers. But this is an example of how a school at about 319 students might have elevated kindergarten and first grade numbers, and then be faced with difficult decisions and actually have to create a split fourth and fifth grade classroom, and still end up with smaller, a fifth grade classroom that's 20. And that's obviously not ideal, but if you have 60 fourth graders and you only have two teachers there, then that's a class of 30 and a class of 30. So, that doesn't work. So, you're, you're really trying to balance the number of teachers that you have. This was in combined, in combination with struggling to hire for all the positions that we had. So, we might have preferred to have one more teacher there, but honestly, we weren't able to, to find those additional teachers. And so, it's like, okay, we have to go with the 13 that we have. We have to make these things work. And so, this is an example of what you might get at a school that has a smaller student population, and they have to make difficult decisions about how to balance those classrooms. I'm going to flip to this one. Same school with the, the projected anticipated enrollment. And while you still have a few classrooms that are above or under, the spread of over and under is much closer to the PTR. So, you have fewer classes that are significantly high, and you have fewer classes that are significantly under, and you're able to balance them a little bit better overall. You don't end up with that, you know, disparity of having an intermediate class low and a primary class high. So, overall, this creates a much better balance, and you're able to do this without having split grade classrooms. I want to acknowledge that there's a difference between an intentional multi-age classroom. We certainly have schools in our district that very intentionally have multi-grade classrooms, and that's something that's programmatically designed into their education. That's different than, you know, suddenly in, in August realizing that the numbers aren't working out, and you're going to have to create a one-two split and maybe a two-three split to, to make things work. That's much more difficult for teachers to do that all of a sudden, and sometimes you're having to do that with teachers that are new to your building or are inexperienced in that. As much as we try to not have that be the case, that sometimes is how it works out. So, I'm going to punt that back to Mr. Beam to explain how having classrooms that are closer to the PTR, closer to this balance, and not having these sort of unexpected split grade levels helps teaching and learning support teachers.
Thank you. So, the, just to work clear on what's, what's the impact of having a split level classroom when you're not really planning for it, when it's not your purpose? That, that makes many things for the teacher much more difficult. Let's say that you have a teacher who is teaching two grade levels in, in the same class. That is twice as many standards to keep track of, to meet. Planning is more arduous. It is more time-consuming. The prep in the classroom is more difficult. There's a wider, like, in, in a single grade classroom, there's a wide range of students. In two grade classrooms, it doubles at least, and it may be even more than that. So, for the teacher in the classroom, that becomes more difficult. I have a background, I have a history in a small district also, and every time, every single time we had PD, the first question out of every teacher's mouth, because they had almost, probably 90% of those classes were split classes, either two grades or three, or three grades, was always, yeah, but what does it look like in this class? What's it look like when you have three grade levels? When you have two grade levels? That makes things much more difficult for the teacher. And having the single grade would enhance that learning opportunity for every student who is in those classes. Now, I do want to say that, as was said before, is that sometimes that we do that on purpose. Some schools do that on purpose. Some we have here across the state, across the nation. But if I were to send an email out to our teachers and principals and say, as a philosophical change, we're all going to teach multi-grade level classes, oh my gosh, the emails and phone calls I would get would be unbelievable. That is not something that most teachers want to do. It just makes things more difficult. That's the first bullet point. The second bullet point, greater opportunities for grade level teacher collaboration. If you are the only first grader or the first grade teacher at a school, it's very difficult to collaborate with other first grade teachers. If you have two, that makes it better. If you have three, then it makes it easier to work together, to learn together, to plan together, all those things. That, that is a potential positive from this also. And for our purposes and my department, we would be able to provide better and more thorough support if we had fewer schools, whether it's just the number of people we have, or, and this seems like kind of trivial, but this is true, the travel time from school to school adds up during the week. So, as coaches go from point A to point, to point B to, to point C, that's something that those minutes add up, and you can't get those back when coaches are making that change. On the next slide, special positions and services, is that this will allow us to fill the vacancies in some of the positions that are hard to fill, counselors, music, counselors specifically is something that we really struggle with on that grade level. That would be kind of a helpful for us. And something else is that there would be a small financial savings, because some materials that we purchase are, are student licenses, some are teacher licenses, but others are actually school licenses. So, if you have a school, so if you have fewer schools, that those licenses would be fewer, and you can see the programs that we have there, that all those are school-based licenses, and we could save about $40,000 by doing that. On the last slide, more schools would become eligible for DODIA grants. DODIA grants are grants for schools that have at least 10% military-connected students. Right now, we have eight or nine military-connected, I'm sorry, schools that would fall under, under this category. As we reduce, there were, more students would be able to take advantage of the DODIA support. So, for example, we have two reading teachers that are funded by a DODIA grant. More students would have access to those reading teachers if we make these changes. Multilingual students, it could potentially be better for them as those communities get bigger at the, at the schools. And then finally, a better opportunity for interventions with more precise groupings specifically. You all know that we've talked about the walk to intervention. Is that the larger the schools, it's possible that those groupings could become more precise as we have more students in those elementary schools.
So, as we have done before, we'll pause here for questions. We're going to be hearing from additional focus areas tonight, but we'll pause here for any questions about the teaching and learning supports or the transition supports.
Mrs. Julian.
Thank you. I, I don't know if I missed it here, but do we have, did you quote how many split level elementary classes we have currently and what our goal is to get to with consolidation?
We did not state that, but our goal would be to get to as few of split level classes as possible, with the exception of there are some schools that intentionally do blended classrooms.
Mr. Dorn.
Thank you. Relatives is the last couple of comments. I'm going to suggest and encourage that we do away with split grade references and do blended grade, because as Mr. Beam outlined, when you do split grade, it does put added pressures on the teacher if you do blended. And I won't get into the arguments of what the differences are, but there's a significant difference, and a more positive one to that. So, I would suggest we move to a blended, and happy to talk to anybody about that. Question on lad being a DODIA school. My understanding that many of the military students who are on post, they will transfer over to Arctic Light, will have enough military-connected families who live off post attending there that it would stay as DODIA, or do we expect that could be a shift?
I don't know if we've looked at that yet. No, but that's something that we can take a look at.
Follow-up, Mr. Dorn.
In this area, but if you want to put me in the queue.
Go ahead, Mr. Dorn.
When we talked about staff supports, FEA, as I pointed out, is having retirement extensions. I was wondering about FPA, since it would be a number of principals. What are the transitions in place for principals?
So, we'll be talking about some of the opportunities for principals a little bit later, but we, I think we would entertain potentially an extension usually after the, once the decision is made, if a principal wanted to retire, they would, we would probably extend that. I don't see why we wouldn't offer that as an opportunity for FPA to engage in that same kind of opportunity.
Yeah, that's correct. I believe FPA has been in conversations with our HR department, and I don't know that it's, any principals have expressed interest in that, but that's something that FPA and the district are working through.
Okay, that's great. Just want to see equity among the three groups. Thank you.
Mr. Burgess.
Thank you. So, on action plan slide here, says prioritize helping students and staff at closing schools feel welcome and supported. And I just wanted to, to just make sure that we're also considering those students who are displaced from schools in order to make room for those schools that are closing.
Absolutely, yes. We understand that we, this will impact more than just students at schools that are closing, that there would be an impact for students who are maybe redistricting. And so, when we talk about support, we would extend that to, to all the students that are impacted, for sure. And, and also give support to schools that are receiving. There's a lot that needs to be done. If you're a receiving school and you're taking in new students, there's specific things that we want to help address as far as how do you create that welcoming environment? How do you blend new groups of students into your, into your community and help them feel like they're very wanted and welcomed there? So, there's definitely work.
Follow-up comment real quick, if that's all right. Just wanted to note that especially if the board goes for the, the change of Barnett to a K-5 model, I think that Barnett students will, will in particular need extra support as well.
Mr. Dorn.
I just wanted to say that I appreciate the outline that administration is doing here on those supports. And Ms. Plante, you also referenced lessons learned when we had the Joy Nordell and Anderson closures. Those staffs and the schools, receiving schools, both schools that were closing and receiving schools, they did a tremendous job in outreach. Last year with the House and the North Pole Secondary Schools, I think it came up a level, and the fact that you're working with parents who have gone through that and, and learning those lessons, I just want to pass on those kudos, because I think it is key in reassuring parents and students of what we're trying to do, and, and staff members.
Any other questions from the board at this time? Ms. Julian.
Is it, I'm trying to remember back to a previous meeting. Do any of the schools that are being proposed for closure not currently have a counselor at them?
I don't believe that there is a full-time counselor at SULCHA.
Okay. And then I guess the follow-up to that is in the inversion, so the layers of intervention, slide number 17, will, who's going to be identifying when those students need that additional support? So, all students, groups of students or individual students, depending on kind of their needs, is that, is that a counselor? So, in a sense, would SULCHA get more support during this process?
So, that would probably be student support teams, the principal, the teachers, the counselor, if there's a counselor there, along with our, our team helping them identify like what kinds of students. I mean, I, we would probably take a very careful look at our special education populations and our intensive and our ER populations, and see if they needed additional supports, and try to anticipate some of that and put those in place. Some of our other known at-risk groups, we would try to address that. But yeah, if there was a specific family that somehow, just a principal wanted to say like, this is a family that's going to need, or this is a student that's going to need additional support, probably somebody at that school is already aware of that and will let us know.
Any other questions? Follow-up, Ms. Julian?
An additional one. What is the, do we know the percentage of McKinney-Vento and, and some of those other programs that were, that were listed? And I'm sorry, I missed the slide here, at, at the different schools.
So, I think what I would ask is that we're going to go into the student support services section next, and I think that if we could just go into that, that might answer some of the questions that you're leaning towards.
Any other questions from the board? Go ahead and continue, Ms. LaPlante.
All right. So, yes, we are going into student support services and the ways that they are prepared to support students, some of the impacts that they will see in these, in these changes and transitions, and how they, what things would look like next year should these changes be made. So, I'm going to invite Brianna Gray, Executive Director for Student Support Services, to share with you.
Absolutely. Thank you. So, I just wanted to acknowledge our mission statement and vision statement, because we worked really hard on this in partnership with our families. Most of our programs have parent advisory committees. We work with our educators and throughout different schools and even students. And so, we play an important role in ensuring all students have access to the resources that they need. This could be anything from a bike. We had a student who their bike was stolen, and that was their only mode of transportation, and we were able to get them a bike, I think, within that, the next two days. We provide different services for transportation. We do gas cards. We have provided cab services, and we have also connected families to other families to have walking buddies or to carpool. And so, guided by our mission statement to partner with school communities and supporting academic achievement and life success, and our vision of creating supportive and engaging learning communities, these services are applied district-wide. So, I want to make sure that that's also very clear, that we do provide services to students and families, educators, and schools district-wide. And so, our efforts extend beyond Title I schools or even schools with dedicated staff, ensuring that there are supports for students regardless of location. Here are a list of our programs. So, we have grants and partnerships, 21st Century After School Programs, our A&amp;E Alaska Native Education, migrant education, foster care, McKinney-Vento Title I School Improvement and Wellness and Prevention. And to dive a little bit deeper into wellness and prevention, Student Support Services is the direct point of contact for elementary counselors. We also help support our counselor leadership team and our crisis response team. We are also the point of contact for our social service managers. And so, schools receive, staff at schools are able to receive specific training, trauma-informed training, PBIS through our programming. And so, we make sure that that is throughout the year and that we are consistent in communicating with those staff, make sure that's implemented in their schools, and that is district-wide. And we do this at counselor meetings. We do this with our social service managers. We will go to schools and provide training. And so, we also have other programs. And so we also have other programs like Bright Futures where families in our community is able to donate and we are able to provide services to students who aren't specifically enrolled in a program or have a specific need that we might not be able to spend grant funding on. All right, supporting Indigenous families. So within our programs, we have the Alaska Native Education Program. And so Student Support Services staff reach out to A&E families specific, so that's A&E families that are enrolled in the A&E program. To speak about them and make sure that they share their voice regarding school consolidations. And we were able to get in contact with 23 families. And I know that 23 families, we look at that number and it seems like a small amount of families, but it is a large amount of families. And we spent extensive time listening to their voice and that could be an hour, that could be two hours, to make sure that we are fully getting their perspective. And we recognize that transitions can be particularly challenging for Indigenous students specifically because, whose cultural ties and community connections are vital to their safety, to their success, to their comfort level, to their engagement in schools. So in addition to the supports outlined earlier, we are committed to working closely with families, community organizations, school staff and students to make sure that families have the resources that they need to feel safe during a transition. Families expressed concerns about transportation, staff continuity, class sizes and maintaining additional supports provided specifically by Title I, Sbed and Alaska Native Education. And they also provide recommendations. So some of those recommendations to ease the transitions included early communication. They wanted early communication and they wanted it often and not just through email, but also in via mail, via phone. That was really important to them, making sure that there's orientation events and they have the ability to make sure that they get there. So continuing gas cards, continuing cab services if we need to, and so the transportation to events. And then also just making sure that they can continue having the transportation support that they've had. So again, we've talked about gas cards. We've talked about pairing them with families for carpooling, doing little playground events where we make, we have them learn about walk buddies and what that looks like. And then also just making sure that the traditions that they have had at their school can be also transported to another school. And something, they talked about their Native Heritage Month, they have a kickoff at Hunter that starts off the whole entire Native Heritage Month that is well-known. They have gardening and they said just overall the celebration of Indigenous cultures. All right. Which leads me into Title I. So what is Title I? Title I funds are federal funds provided to school districts based upon the percentage of students from low-income families. And low-income families are identified through free and reduced lunch application forms, but I think it's also important to note that there are other ways to qualify for free and reduced lunch, including categorical eligibility. And categorical eligibility for free and reduced lunch numbers includes students who are enrolled in specific programs, so migrant education, foster care and McKinney-Vento. Those students and families do not have to fill out that form, but they do qualify for free and reduced lunch. These schools are then designated as Title I school-wide programs, which allows schools to increase staffing above and beyond what, what the district would normally allocate to a school of this size. So 80 to 90% of school Title I funds are dedicated to additional staff. The other 10 to 20% of the school's allocations are used for enhanced professional development and additional supplies and instructional software. Title I schools also have dedicated funds for family engagement. Family engagement is really a cornerstone of any Title I program beyond being required, which research really shows that family engagement increases student achievement. And Title I family engagement activities have to include academic elements. Typically, the schools are sharing ideas with parents on literacy, math or science activities that they can do, that they can do at home. So encouraged learning at home in addition to being at school. And then each Title I school also follows a rigorous and continuous school improvement cycle. That includes data review, it includes program evaluations, needs assessments and program planning. So for example, we typically would begin that planning in February for the next school year. And so during that time, we're reviewing data, evaluating the effectiveness of this year's plan, and we do that throughout the year as well, completing a needs assessment and finally developing the plan for next year. And these plans are also in alignment with our district's strategic plan. And each Title I school's leadership team participates in this process, including principals, teachers, parents, staff, and we also have some students that have participated as well. All right. So Title I school-wide programming. When a school is added as a Title I school, it receives additional resources and funding to implement programs that improve overall student outcomes, such as instructional support, professional development and family engagement. If a school is eliminated from the Title I designation, it loses access to these supplemental funds. And the district, we allocate these funds to other eligible schools. And all students, staff and families benefit from a school-wide plan. I think that's important to note as well. All right. So here we have a list of current Title I schools and then anticipated Title I schools after consolidation. There can be an opportunity to add additional schools and there's also, there could be opportunities if there are schools were to fall below the 40% that we could do a waiver. And we have done waivers in the past. And the reason for doing so is we want to make sure that we are sustainable in our school-wide programming. And so if you're at 40% and the next year you're at 39%, we would typically provide a waiver to deed, asking them to continue the school-wide programming for the following year to make sure there is sustainability. But if it was a large drop, if it was like 40 to 30%, that most likely wouldn't be accepted. In the following slides, so these slides, we will explore how schools will maintain or even increase supports for a greater number of students. We will also highlight the programs that currently have or are planning to have staff assigned to these schools, but please note that some of these positions may still be vacant or in the process of being filled. So here's the example. We have Hunter Elementary that has multiple layers of support and students will be flowing into schools where they will have access to similar programming and services. And it is important to note too, when we're looking at this graphic, that Lad, while not having designated staff on-site, has participated in the same or similar professional development opportunities as Hunter, Denali and U Park. And one of those items that we could use that as an example is Playworks Training. So we can see that Hunter Elementary has Title I, after-school programming, Alaska Native Education, and then also DODA, and then Denali, Title I, after-school programming, Alaska Native Education, and then also Ferbings Native Association also has Johnson O'Malley tutors in our schools. And that is one of the schools that has that support. Lad Elementary, DODA support, and then U Park, Title I, Alaska Native Education and Johnson O'Malley. One thing that's not highlighted in here is that many of our Alaska Native Education staff are, are also partially funded out of migrant education. And so these individuals can also work directly with migrant education students. All right, next slide. So here's an example of a school that has limited access to layered supports from district programs. Students from Pearl Creek could potentially flow to schools that offer a comprehensive range of programs and services, including Title I, Alaska Native Education, migrant education, Johnson O'Malley and after-school programs. Then when we look at Midnight Sun, we can see Midnight Sun students would flow into schools with similar or more supports. And then here we can see students from Two Rivers and Salcha Elementary will flow to schools with similar or more supports and program, programming as well. And it's also note that what's not listed on here is if there are ever times when we're doing our needs assessments and we're working with schools, that we have also provided positions, services or other support at schools from other dedicated funding. That is not necessarily a program. All right. And then here's also a graph showcasing the potential supports and programs available after school consolidation. Each of these programs, again, conducts a thorough needs assessment, which is continuously evaluated throughout the year to ensure services and staffing are prioritized effectively in alignment with our improvement and strategic plans. So overall, more students will be attending schools that have more layered supports. One thing that we do not have on here is the percentages of students in each of our programs, but I can pull that information and have that information sent through Luke.
And, and one thing that I'll just add as a consideration for our title schools, because we recognize that we would be increasing the overall population at current title schools. We are looking into the possibility of having assistant principals at title schools because we know that there's an increase of, of students, there's an increase of students' IEPs, there's an increase of staff that need to, you know, evaluations. So having APs at those schools is something that we're hopeful we can work into the, the budget through different resources.
Can I add one more thing? And when it comes to title schools, when we are looking at the different professional development conferences, supplies, we have a Title I menu of approved services and supplemental instructional materials that we do work with teaching and learning and our executive director team to review and make sure that every school has the opportunity to do the same resources. So when we're looking at Title I schools, most of them are going to the same, to the same trainings, looking at similar staffing and professional development.
So here's another pause for questions and we're going to try to keep the questions on to the topics that we've covered, knowing that we're going to be covering some other things here shortly.
Mrs. Hardy.
Wasn't aware I was first up there. So, sorry. You mentioned gas cards for families. How would families qualify for gas cards for transportation support? And along with that, is that something that Salcha and Two Rivers families, who we've know, you know, we've heard that that could significantly increase their cost for transportation, could qualify for?
Yes, so we have gas cards provided by specific programs. So right now we have McKinney-Vento, foster care, and we also have migrant education that provides gas cards. And a lot of the times, we do actually provide those services right now to Two Rivers and Salcha. And so we have had to provide gas cards, cab rides to those specific schools. And so we would continue doing what we do now. When we are reached out and families say that they have a need for transportation, we speak with them thoroughly to understand what their needs are because we've also done car repairs as well under certain qualifying grants. And so we speak with families first, even if a school were to call us and say, this family has a transportation need, we speak with the families directly to see where we can truly make sure that we're making the largest impact. And so one family said, we don't want gas cars, we just really need our car to be repaired. And so that's what we did, right? And so that's how we would go forward on that process.
Ms. Maple.
Can you just give me an idea of what services on the student support changes for Hunter? We have Lad there. If the Barnett K-5 model happened, what support services are available at Barnett, if any?
So that would be similar as well. And so there will be positions at specific schools that we can relocate to specific schools. And then also when we go through the thorough needs assessment, we will say, okay, we identified through this needs assessment that they need a tutor, or they might not need a tutor, but they need after-school support and something else, right? Or we need to make sure that we're providing summer learning experiences for students in this area. And so a good example of that would be Salcha. Right now, we currently fund one FTE and we also provide professional development for them, even though they are not currently a title school, because we identified that through their needs assessment that was a need. And so while working with our administrative team and also working with our school principals, we'll look through that needs assessment and see where we can prioritize our funding.
But none of those programs currently existed.
So we do have a migrant education staff member that we are trying to hire there and we also work with their counselors there directly. And so any school that has a counselor, we work with directly. And so we do provide supports district-wide. We provide supplies, we provide transportation assistance, even if we don't have a staff member there. So there is an opportunity to have more staff if the needs are.
Okay. I have one more. Do you want me to wait?
Good follow-up.
I actually don't know if this is the right time to ask this. I was flipping through and don't see an obvious time, so I'm going to throw it out. One of the concerns that I've heard is specifically at the elementary level, that the increase of the school population at any schools and the impact that that will have on the counselors serving those schools. And I wonder if there's been any, well, is this, is there a better time to ask a question about counselors?
This seems like an appropriate time.
Okay. If there's been any consideration of, I mean, I know that there's issues with vacancies with counselors, but if there's been any consideration of having like split counselors or just how to, how we would support the increased caseload that our counselors at elementary schools would have?
So I think there's two parts to that question. I'm going to go back to the potential of having APs supported through title funds at the increased Title I schools. And an AP, like a principal, has multi-facets that they can provide for service, including covering some things that counselors can do or alleviating the things that are falling to counselors that aren't really part of their job, so that counselors can actually focus on their primary job. We have a lot of that kind of thing happening throughout the district while, one, we have holes, people instead of doing their primary job, they're doing all the other things to fill in the needs and not getting to their primary role. So I think that having APs there to assist would actually help counselors be able to focus on their counseling role and help nurses count, focus on nursing and help, you know, everybody do the things. Additionally, it's going to come down to the rest of the budgeting process this spring and what resources we're able to redirect, you know, how much revenue we end up getting from the borough, how much revenue we end up getting to, from the state, how much we're able to save from our budget and then able to put that back to serving students. So I hear exactly what you're saying and I have, my desire would be to do that, but that's going to depend a lot on the rest of the budget process.
Ms. Carol Hubbard.
Caught me by surprise, thank you. Okay. My question is about the after-school programs. I was just looking at the slide for this, slide 27. And Hunter going into Denali looks fairly even as far as support. And then Lad and University Park, neither one have an after-school program. And I also was noticing that Wood River does not have one. What is our determination for an after-school program? And if we were to divide Hunter into three or four schools, is that something that we might want to make sure that we have available for them, considering that that's one of the services they currently have? Do we know how well-used it is at their school?
Yes, so our after-school programming, we actually have our RFAs opening in February. And so that is when we will do our needs assessment, look at the support that is needed and recommend specific schools to deed. And so there is possibilities that we will be having after-school programs at different schools, but we won't know what that will look like until after we submit our RFA. Or 21st Century CCL, see, I should clarify too, as well.
Mr. Burgess.
First, I just want to say, with regard to the outreach to A&E families on Hunter, I just want to say thanks for doing that. I say all the time that we need to, when we, when we're doing outreach, when anyone's doing outreach, it should be reaching out, not expecting people to come to us. So I, I do truly appreciate that, that that work was done and that we were able to contact those families. My question is, it's kind of a couple of questions maybe, but in speaking to folks at these different schools that are on our list, there's, there's a lot of programs that exist that either collaborate with one another or, or rely on outside collaboration. They're not necessarily falling into the student support bracket as necessarily, but, but things like, you know, I've heard that at Midnight Sun, their IR program works very closely with their preschool, pre-K program. And that, you know, we've had the example at Pearl Creek of, of a strong partnership between a teacher there and FNA bringing in elders. So what kinds of, what, what can we do to help preserve those kinds of programs and collaborations?
So I think that some of that is just really encouraging and supporting specifically if it's a teacher, when they go to their new site, seeing what can we do to support re-establishing and carrying over those traditions. I would just say in far, as far as traditions, we know that schools have traditions that, that are part of that community. And as they're being welcomed to a new school, seeing how can we incorporate some of those traditions so that you don't lose it, but it's a blending of families. As far as things like the, the preschool and the, the special education IR programs collaborating, I think that can be replicated, not just at one school, but at many schools. There's lots of opportunities. Sometimes it has to do just with the, the people making good connections and being encouraged to continue those connections. So I think there's a variety of things from the, from very strategically supporting and, and being explicit about the kinds of things that we want to see carry on and making sure that people feel welcome to bring their traditions and the things that they've done with them. And have, making sure that the receiving schools make room for that and, and say, yes, we want to incorporate your traditions into our school. If you guys have always done a, a particular event or a race or something like that, then we can, let's take a look at where we can fit that into our calendar and blend those things, blending a family. then we can, let's take a look at where we can fit that into our calendar and blend those things, blending a family. And then also just making sure that they have the support. If it's something that is a program-to-program, that we can continue to support that. I know, for example, that at Pearl Creek, they have the relationship with Thrive Alaska, which is an outside childcare provider. And we would definitely want to encourage that good partnership with Thrive Alaska to continue at one of our other schools and continue to provide those services for families in our community, and if possible, even extend that.
But you anticipated my next question, so thank you.
She's the best. Next, we have Mrs. Julian, then Mrs. Hardy, and then Mr. Doran.
Thank you also for addressing Thrive. That was a question that came up during our listening sessions. And so thank you for explaining how that could be extended to a different school should Pearl Creek potentially be closed. I have a question about Title I in particular. I was just looking through the, I was comparing the Title I anticipated schools with the, with what our school capacity and also our qualifying families for free and reduced lunches, that percentage, and I think that was in an earlier slide. However, I'm looking at a couple of different things here. Most of the Title I that we would have with this recommendation falls below, with the exception of Denali and Tiquisic Brown, would fall below 40%. So would we then be requesting waivers for all of those?
So the way that we identify schools is we look at January to March. So we take the average of those three months.
Okay.
But if they were to fall below, yes, we would have to provide a waiver to deed to do so.
Okay, and, okay, and then with Barnett. Barnett wasn't listed as an anticipated Title I school. However, it looks like it would be 44% of that student population should we redraw district lines into Hunter. So would Barnett being a magnet school also be able to be a Title I school?
Yes, what we would, yes, that could be an opportunity.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Hardy.
Ms. Carol Hubbard asked the same question I was going to, so we're good.
Okay, then we will go to Mr. Doran.
We're along some similar veins, because LAD would be in the same position that Barnett would be as far as Title I. I appreciated the Title I listing of who's current and who's projected. It'd be nice, because my, part of my question looks at A&E. You know, these are resources that would not be, would be coming from a, that could be shifted to another school. And so I'm looking at, you know, with the Native community has expressed a real interest in the traditions and those pieces. The liaisons are extremely important to that. So can we have what the potential would be that we would do it? I mean, same as Title I that we're looking at, and to see a similar type of thing, and then what those, what are we looking at for shifting those so the students would have those services? We know the money doesn't follow the student. Or, you know, and schools can shift. You can be Title I for years. I used to say it's about every five to seven year cycle, you're dropped out and you're back in. But, you know, and the waivers are great, depending on the numbers and how Title I federal laws are written at a given time. So I'm just trying to see, and again, you've kind of answered the question, but it would be good to have the information on what, who are the next schools that are in for A&E, for ASP? You know, we have a school program that's ending or might end at a school. I don't know where they are in the grant cycle. If Hunter was closed, their ASP program, can we just, if it's continuing under that ground, can we just shift that to another school? I mean, I know we have to go through some paperwork, but.
Yes, so if the Hunter program were to move for ASP specifically to another school, students previously enrolled with the after-school program would be an enrollment priority. So I did want to note that, just to make sure that answered part of the other question that was asked as well. And if they are going to a school that already has a program, they will also, they would still have priority enrollment. But we wouldn't know for sure until after we received confirmation with deed what those schools would be. And in terms of Alaska Native Education, we work really closely with the migrant education and Johnson-on-Malley program as well to make sure that we're not just putting all of our resources at one school either. And so we will continue to have conversations about placements as we continue to move along.
Follow-up. Okay, on the after-school program, if I understood what you said, if that program shifted to another school, those students already in the after-school would be given priority, and then that school will start filling in. But if they're transferring to another school, they would take priority and could bump off students that are at the school already benefiting from ASP?
We would try to make sure that we're accommodating all students if we have the staff to be able to do so. But we will be providing priority for those students.
Over those who are currently in the program?
I wouldn't say that specifically, because there are several different things that we look at when we're looking at enrollment. And so it could be specific to specific students.
Any other questions from the board? Seeing none at this time, Ms. LaPlante, please continue.
Thank you very much. Our next section here, let's see. Waking up my mouse here. Is educational options and opportunities. We've heard about the, some of the additional things that we're doing outside of just our traditional schools and brick and mortar schools. And so I'm going to invite Ms. Lori Beam to talk about the things that fall under her area.
Thank you. And this really came because our last time that we met, two weeks ago or three weeks ago, whenever it was, one of our board members asked for a little information on SMART and Star of the North. So I'm here to provide that for those board members who don't know. Our SMART program is our school that provides academic services, group therapy, well, not therapy, but group sessions and one-on-one sessions for our students who are expelled or who are on long-term suspension. They go over the reasons why they were suspended and expelled. We try to provide them with opportunities on how could we do something different from whatever it was that they were suspended or expelled for. One of the reasons that SMART has been brought up is because we do have students out in North Pole. I did provide a slide that says and it shows, because we had this discussion last year in the spring. We had 15 students last year and 15 students the year before who chose not to come into town for whatever reason. Their parents don't have transportation, it's a long way. They don't want or can't get them in for whatever the reasons are. They're their own personal reasons. So those students have dropped out, or they have transferred to other home schools. Part of the reasons why we have them in our district is so we can provide those decision-making opportunities on how to make new decisions. So when they go back to their schools, they're not coming back to us as repeat offenders. Those are, those are school, or these are students that we have now lost. They have not come back to the district because there are, there's requirements for them to do certain things in order for them to come back to our schools. If we had a satellite office out in North Pole, because again, these are our North Pole families, they would be able to come in and we, I can't tell you how good SMART is. I would really encourage you to go there and see for yourselves. Once our students are there, they don't want to leave. So we do a lot of work with them to get them to go back and want to go back. And we work with our schools to get them to go back. But again, we do, we have a number of North Pole students or a little further out who would benefit from having something out in North Pole, whether it's at Midnight Sun or another spot. We just need to do something that will help those students. And we talk about high-risk students, high-need students. These are some of our students who are the neediest of the needy in the district. This is their one spot that they can go, that we try to turn their behavior around so they don't continue on the path that they're on and possibly end up in our Golden Heart Academy School, which is our jail facility. Star of the North is another school slash program that is, again, the neediest of the needy. These are students who, for whatever reason, whether it's because they have special ed needs, because there's some anxiety there, they have proven to their families that the regular school is not for them. They can't handle the bills, they can't handle lots of kids walking around. They're in a small environment that, they don't do transfers from, or transitions from one spot to the next very well. I will give you an example of a student who, it took the mom, the teacher, and another teacher, our sped person who's out there with them. It took him about two weeks to transition from getting from the car into the classroom. And every day was a little bit more, a little bit more. And if you could see this student, he's a, he's a, he was very introverted and he did not want to talk. Now he is talking up a storm. He is doing very well. But if we had to put him into North Pole High where he was supposed to go, he would not have made it. He would have dropped out because he can't handle all those stimulation that goes on in a traditional school. And we need something like this. These are, some of these students are so smart, they're, they have accelerated. Some of these students are on credit recovery. In this school, the students stay where they are and the teachers are the ones that are moving. So the kids have their spot, they're there for, some of them are there for four years and they're in that spot. And when they move over to, because they have it divided up, they're, they're really happy. Again, I wish, those of you who have not been out there, you should go, because it's pretty unique. And as soon as you walk into that door, you feel, hey, this is kind of a cool spot. It's very, it's very light. There's not that big structure of, and demand of, you have to do this. It's, it's a, it's a big community, and I love it. I can't say enough about it. Their lease is up June 30th, so we have to have them go somewhere. This is not by choice. It is, they have a lease, they have to move. And we are trying to move them into a spot that will not damage them. And I'm going to use that word, damage, because that's what we're doing. And I know that's what a lot of us are thinking about our own schools. But again, these are some of the neediest of the needy students. Best homeschool, I'm going to talk about that, just, because it keeps coming up, we're moving best out there. This is just a satellite office. We have some students that are in Delta, we have some students that are in Salsha, we have some students that are in North Pole whose parents have a hard time coming into town because some of them don't like electronics, they want to hand-deliver their receipts, they want to hand-deliver whatever it is that they're going to drop off. And they would like to have somebody who can come to them. And this is just a spot, again, it doesn't have to be at Midnight Sun. It could be someplace else where we're all kind of gathered as a, as a group. But it would be nice to have something for those families who can't make it into town or especially our families that are further out. It's, it would just be good. Some of the things that we have looked at, and I'll use Nor Dale as its spot. They have, we've grown, I think, three times as much as where it used to be. And it's not, now it's not just because of, I hate to say the word, but COVID, because we are continually gaining our students. There's a lot of activities that we can provide. If we were to be able to move out to a school, we would do a survey to find out what parents want. Do they want to have a gym once a week, once a month? Just some activities that we could do with them out there, that we're doing over at Nor Dale. There has been some questions about what does an ed specialist do? An ed specialist is a teacher who is certified. They work with families one-on-one. They create a learning plan that is very individualized for that student. They, they make monthly calls. Some of our parents come in or call, and we're Zooming with them once a week. It really depends on what the needs of the family are, what the needs of the students are. Those teachers, ed specialists can give suggestions on curriculum, on materials. They are there to do whatever they can for whatever the families need. When we say homeschool, it is not the parents staying home with their student and doing everything on their own. They're doing it with some guidance, and the teachers are there for guidance.
Thank you so much, and we will take any questions.
Mrs. Hardy.
We're ready for you this time, and I have a few, so you can put me back in the queue.
Okay.
I thought I wasn't, and I got lost in my, so, and this is more because I've never asked the question about where the funding comes from, not, I completely support SMART. I visited, it's a fantastic program and vital to our students. But is SMART funded through grants or our general fund dollars? And this is because those students have been suspended or expelled. So I wasn't sure if the district receives funding through the foundation formula for those students. How are we funding this program?
It is through the general fund.
Yes. Yeah, and there's no specific component of the funding model that funds that program, but we do fund it through the general fund.
We get, follow-up, any credit for those students as like part of a 10-day count? Or do we just pull it from the general fund and those students are?
So my only pause is if they're expelled. I believe, I don't know 100% the answer to if they're expelled. If they're on long-term suspension, they would still understandably be enrolled in the school district, but.
I think we'd get their ADM through ALS, and so they would be counted for there.
Yeah, so if you ever have a chance to look at the school listing, to Dr. Minor's point, there's, if it's in alphabetical order, it should be top, front and center. ALS, Alternative Learning Systems, is an established school within the funding model. And it includes a wide range of different programs of the district consolidated into one school in the funding model.
Mrs. Hardy.
Okay. Star of the North, and this is more for everybody's information, that primarily draws a student's body from North Pole. And so would it be safe to say that they need to find a home within North Pole? So moving to Nor Dale would not be an option.
Correct. Most of their parents, if, I would say, and this is just an estimate, probably 98% of their families are out in North Pole. And when we first met with the, with the staff in August to talk about movement, that was one of their requests. So in order for them to continue functioning the way that they are, they really feel they need to stay in North Pole. North Pole needs some TLC, because North Pole is kind of forgotten sometimes, and that's where most of their families are.
We're going to go to Ms. Maple.
For the best education specialist, do you have an estimate of what like the PTR looks like for, what's their caseload?
They run between 135 and some of them have 150. There's a couple new ones that still are working their way up, and they have maybe 90 to 100.
Thank you.
So we try to max them out at 135, 150.
So before we jump over to Mr. Doran, I just want to say that, so I consider myself a mom of many. I have hundreds of kids out there throughout our district who I have known for many, many years. One in particular who last year was not doing too well in school, never really has a lot of behavior issues tied to that. And they went to Star of the North this year. And my friend has turned around tenfold. And so I just really wanted to throw that in there as to what Star of the North can do. And, you know, the student is very. And, you know, the, the student is very much one of those scenarios that needed Star of the North, and it has helped tenfold. So it's just a great program. Mr. Doran.
Clarification on the SMART said 15 students declined, and the implication was they were all from North Pole, but is that accurate?
No, that's not accurate. We have, I just wanted to say, we had 15 students last year and 15 students the year before who decided no. The majority of them say no because of transportation issues coming in. Because our, we don't have.
But not necessarily from North Pole.
No, but there.
We do have.
We have a good number of them from North Pole. And I'm going to add, we do not have transportation for our students in the SMART program. Parents are expected to bring them in. And kudos to Mrs. Gray because her program provides gas tokens, but I don't know how you do it, but gas cards. And one of my students at SMART was the beneficiary of the bicycle that she talked about purchasing. So we get lots of stuff from, from A and E and whatever other programs.
Mrs. Hardy.
And it's more of a comment, just for the listening public and all that, before I was on the board was when Joy and Nor Dale and Anderson and all of that closed. And I'm going to say, I was very skeptical of the use of Nor Dale as a, a homeschool option. And, you know, as you learn more, you understand things better. And now, three years on the board, I, I do really support them having that home and I can see the value of them having a home in North Pole. And I know that that, like, it gives me, that used to be a neighborhood school. But I say this as somebody who has seen the benefits for the students that choose. And when we say homeschool, it's kind of a misnomer, as was said, those students aren't sitting at home. I have friends who have chosen, chosen to homeschool their families or homeschool their, their students who have left charter schools to homeschool, who have left Pearl Creek to homeschool, who made those choices for whatever reason that was right for their family. And however we got there, it's the way our state has chosen to fund things. And us not having a competitive homeschool program is part of why we are in the situation we're in right now. And the clearest way to look at that is to look at Galena and the fact that their actual student population is a couple hundred students. And because they have had a super-competitive, robust homeschool program for years now, they are not facing this funding crisis. Homeschool students and the money that they bring in goes, we put money back in the general fund from that. They actually help keep our neighborhood schools afloat right now. And so I understand the feeling because I was there. I was sitting in the seats in this boardroom angry that a building that had students was going to be given to homeschoolers, and why was this? And so I invite you to, to kind of take a breath with those feelings and there, there is more. And it's not the way I would choose. I, I often tell my kids, one of them asks me to homeschool him all the time, mostly because he wants more access to screens. Him and I would not survive that relationship. We tried that. I am a certified teacher with a master's degree in special education. It would not work. That is not a good relationship for me and my child to have, but that doesn't mean that it doesn't work for a lot of other families. And this is the way our state chooses to fund things and giving them the options and remaining competitive in what is a true statewide market. You can homeschool through anywhere, and that is why we have buildings currently taking up tax revenue that our community can no longer tax on for competing homeschools in our Fairbanks, North Starborough. We have to be competitive. We cannot sit back anymore and think that a room in the ADC was enough. It wasn't, and we've missed the mark, and now we're slowly bringing those students back to the district. And the more we can attract from our competing homeschools back to best, the less our budget crisis gets.
That's it. Mrs. Hardy, thank you for those comments. Mr. Burgess.
I also wanted to say thank you for those comments. I, you know, for, for, for better or worse, this is the situation that we find ourselves in. And we do have to compete with other districts. And, and I recognize that. That's, that is where we are with our homeschool program. And I wanted to say thank you to Ms. Beam for providing this information. I am the board member that asked for it, and I think, part of why I asked for it is because I think it's really important for the public to hear. I do have a question also, and that is, if, if we did not repurpose Midnight Sun, what would the options be for the Star of the North?
I think our options are pretty limited at that point in time. If we did not want to set up a space at North Pole High, which, as Ms. Beam has said, is not a great option, given many of those students have tried being educated at North Pole High and it didn't work out for whatever reason, that our next option would potentially be looking in Fairbanks, which we would be having transportation issues. Third option, private lease, returning to something in the private sector. And so Midnight Sun truly is our best option when we're looking at consolidation and then repurposing.
Thank you.
Ms. Dullian.
Thank you. Similar question to the, when I asked earlier about the possibility of moving charter school into a wing of a elementary school that may not be totally at capacity. One of the things, I am probably one of the more skeptical board members around repurposing a neighborhood school for best homeschool. My, I know that right now, we, we received a presentation a couple of board meetings ago about best homeschool being under an improvement plan this year. Am I correct with that?
So they are. It's part of, the, part of the reason is because it's homeschool. Not all of our students or parents take the AK Star, which is what it's based on. They have the option as all, as is the right of every parent to decline to test. I do have to say, our graduation rate that, that we were on for has come off. Our graduation rate, and I know we've talked about it, I think maybe once, is the one that has grown the highest. So that one we are working on. Now we're on just, I think it's for special ed students, Alaska Native students, and I think our economically, our low economic students is what we're on for now. But part of the reason is there's only a certain group of people who want to come in and test.
Okay, yeah, I, thank you. And just for the listening public, the percentage of correspondence students, is it, do we have a district-wide number or do we have a statewide number on the percentage of correspondence students who participate in standardized tests? Is it about 13%, 16% statewide?
Statewide.
Yeah, so there's not a lot of accountability there when it comes to really being able to compare apples to apples. However, I recognize that we are in a competitive market and we are in that competitive market by legislation, not by our own choosing. So could a homeschool, could best homeschool, one of the things that I'm thinking about is, could we offer that at different schools across our district, different satellites, so that families have a connection and students have a connection to in-person schools as well and to be able to integrate? There's, there's a thought process there of, you know, you, there's more of an opportunity to socialize, there's more of an opportunity to integrate with, with specials and such versus going to one location, one building.
Yeah, I think there's a lot layered in that question. And so many of our homeschool students already take advantage of kind of elective options at schools. Now that's different from having, you know, best homeschool in a neighborhood school. And I do think that you lose some things by not having a dedicated space. You know, certainly the disruption to that existing school and the parking challenges and just the logistics of going to a neighborhood school is different. You know, all of our neighborhood schools have buzzer systems, so you have to be buzzed into buildings and so a bit different there. Wouldn't have access to gyms or music rooms and different opportunities that we currently have at Nor Dale for our families. Could it be done? It could, but it would be a step back in services for our homeschool students and families. And so if we are truly trying to be competitive in that market, I think right now in Fairbanks, we have a competitive advantage in having a Nor Dale. And then looking at the North Pole region, being able to do something similarly there does put us well-positioned in that area. We are competing with homeschool programs that have statewide offices, and so they're not talking about just little satellites here and there. They're competing in other bigger markets. And so, you know, if we really want to be the best homeschool provider here in Fairbanks and focus on that, then taking some of these opportunities to grow and expand and try to seek that revenue would be helpful for the district in the future.
We've slipped into that area that we were trying to avoid in that pre-deciding where things would wind up.
Yeah.
But since we've done that, we do have to.
He's going to dive in.
Do a couple pieces of it. With SMART, we have talked for years, and how do we provide better access to that? And efforts have been done and tapping into resources. It's been mentioned with Ms. Gray, programs. And we've known and have discussed the issue of students who might be able to access SMART, who are from North Pole or other outlying areas, and it's a harder thing when it's been in distant town here. But it's a service we need to provide and it's really, really important. With Star of the North, I, it's, it's part of our bigger question that we need to do. And I come back to, what is a magnet? What is a specialized program? Star of the North, its origin was with North Pole Academy. And I remember sitting in this room as North Pole Academy students came to testify to the board, who was cutting funding completely for Star of the North, or for North Pole Academy. And basically, they looked at the board members, each of them, and I was not on the board, I was a principal in town here. And they said, honestly, do you want your child sitting next to me? They, those students did a beautiful job in their testimony, what it meant to them. Basically, it's been alluded to this year, you know, but they had different color hair, they had lots of attachments. They were beautiful. They did a wonderful, wonderful job. It was the last night of the budget, or I think it was pretty close to the last night of the budget. Anyway, they got the funding. And immediately, the next year, we set up the charter school, which was Star of the North and CEC together. So it had that origin. And as Star of the North, now in a little different version than North Pole Academy came, but it has changed. And one of the conversations I think we really need to have is, what is it doing? And we've watched it, they're not serving the same kids that they were. Are they savoring, serving kids in need? Absolutely. And it's impressive to go in and spend some time, as I have in, in those classrooms. But that's the conversation we need to have. You know, with, with best, I go across my mind in terms of saying, you know, we're talking how we're going to use the buildings somewhat prematurely, but perhaps not. But Nor Dale was left off as a school. It is a standalone school. Do we need two standalones?
Do you have a question, Mr. Doran?
That's, I'm making, yes. I'm saying, my, part of my question is, we need to look at these pieces for it. Because we are getting beyond, we're already deciding, yes, Midnight Sun is going to be repurposed. But that was, my question is, why are we there if that's not, we're saying that we're not there, but yet we're there.
Ms. Maple.
Kind of actually speaking to that, I didn't know that I, that, that's where I was going to land. But I wanted to, last year I advocated for, it didn't come to be because budget, it's budget, but for a part-time or another, another best employee to serve more outlying areas. And regardless of what happens with consolidations in North Pole, I would advocate for that again this year. Sorry, it's not a question, but I'll be very quick. I just wanted to note, it might, it might be anecdotal, but my last conversation with Representative Prox, of course, out in North Pole, he acknowledged that some of the feedback he'd received, because he's very embedded in the homeschool community, that some of the feedback that he had already heard surrounding our conversations was excitement about more homeschool resources out there. And so I, you know, hearing from that community that that is something that they're excited to hear us talking about, even if that is not at Midnight Sun, even if that is, you know, us having somebody that's able to go meet with folks in North Pole, it's something that I intend to continue advocating for.
Thank you, Ms. Maple. So we have about 45 slides left to go. Is there any more questions or may we move on? No? Not that many? Okay, close. Maybe not that quite, quite that many. I read it wrong. Everyone looked at me like, what?
But I appreciate the impact statement.
I was like, wait, put my glasses on.
All right, we're going to go into special education impacts and how we, what special education currently is provided and how we anticipate being able to continue to serve our students very well and perhaps increase and improve on special education services. So for this, I'm going to turn to, to Kate Hall. And again, there will be opportunity for questions.
All right, I'm 45.
I'm tired, I'm sorry, Kate.
Yep. All right. So I wanted to start with a couple of just real brief explanations of some of what our programs look like overall. The last two years I've been able to present before the board, but the time that I did it here in October was prior to the current board configuration. So just make sure everyone knows my acronyms and different types of programs and that sort of thing. So we have three district-wide, and, and I'm speaking strictly of, let me preface, I'm speaking strictly of elementary school. And ELP falls under the special education umbrella, but we're not looking at dramatic changes to ELP this year. So they would fall more into the line, when I get into specialists, that we'll have fewer schools to cover, but, but nothing big changing there. So there's not a whole lot to speak to that. So our three district-wide programs that are in elementary school, we have intensive resource programs, we have extended resource programs, and we have preschool programs. And we also, and those are district-wide programs that are only in some of our elementary schools. In all of our elementary schools, we have resource teachers that provide specific academic supports and some levels of moderate behavior and social emotional supports. And then we also have related service providers and itinerant specialists. So there is a, a long list of specialists within special education-related services and itinerant supports. And much like what Mr. Bean was talking about with coaches and that sort of thing, one big impact with those folks is just fewer, fewer campuses to address. And this is true of ELP also. So rather than going across, you know, the, the current number of campuses, it just reduces that by a certain percentage and so less windshield time and more sitting in front of students' time. The first chart here is how our special education programs are currently configured in elementary schools. So which schools have preschool programs, which schools have extended resource programs, which schools have intensive resource. And then we have one special program that's noted there. We have a cohort of deaf and hard-of-hearing students that attend University Park Elementary School. And the preschool program that's at University Park is also targeted to our deaf and hard-of-hearing population. And that's a cohort that isn't necessarily a specific classroom, but that is a specialty group that we would try to, that we would plan to maintain. So the thing I want you to note on this slide is the number of gray boxes that there are. A lot of our specialized supports are not available at all of our elementary schools. They're just at, at a few. And in many, in. And in many, really except for preschool in less than half of our elementary schools. So going to the next slide, sort of an overall look at special education in elementary, we have 1,550 elementary special education students, and the five schools that are proposed to foreclosure in the consolidation plan, there are 332 students that are in special education at those schools. And the split there is 295 are school age, and then there's 37 preschool students that are in those five schools. Something that I want to highlight, and again, sort of talking about, resource supports are currently at every elementary school. Resource supports wouldn't necessarily change in a consolidation plan, and we saw this with Joy and Anderson and the Nordeale closure. The overwhelming majority of resource students are in special education for a small portion of their day. They would follow their boundary lines, the number of teachers that are needed in those schools would follow the number of students that end up in those schools. So there isn't a really big story within resource beyond, we aren't looking at increasing caseloads or reducing the overall number of supports in that area. Sort of the bigger thing related to these five schools is our district-wide programs. And there's nine district-wide program classrooms that are in the five schools proposed foreclosure. So Salcha and Two Rivers both function as cross-categorical schools. So we do everything we can to keep high-needs students in those sort of geographically isolated schools. They have heavy special education supports there so that we don't have students that have to be bused. Sometimes there's a program that's at the next available elementary school, but in some cases, you could be, you could be busing kids from, from Two Rivers or Salcha, deep into town, which is not beneficial. So they exist as cross-categorical and do not have district-wide programs, but there are three district-wide programs, classes at each of the three larger elementary schools. And one thing that I want to note there is that we currently have, 65% of our special education students that are in district-wide programs cannot attend their attendance area school based on where we have programs. So, and our highest number, that's, that's overall preschool IR and ER. IR numbers are actually much higher than that, somewhere in the neighborhood of 75% of our intensive needs students. And I mean intensive needs, not intensive funding, intensive needs, intensive classrooms, are not able to attend their attendance area school because the district has placed them at a different school based on the resources that we have at those schools. So that's something I want you to kind of keep in your mind. That, that impacts their ability to attend school with their siblings, it impacts their ability to ride a general education bus if they're capable of doing that, and it also impacts their ability to be with their neighborhood peers. And I have, I can't see anymore, it's so terrible. I have some notes that aren't on the slide, but just some sort of narrative stories around what that can look like for students. If you're looking at the, the chart of where, where our program schools are right now, if you imagine a first grader whose family has, is in the attendance area of Weller, and they are happily enjoying first grade, and their family has gone to carnivals and things at Weller through kindergarten and first grade, and their sibling starts, is found eligible for preschool, and we need to place that student in a preschool program. There is no preschool that's available at Weller, so we would choose a school as reasonably close to Weller as we could. Perhaps they go to preschool at Denali Elementary. So now you have a family that has students who are both elementary age but are at two separate elementary schools. That student that's in preschool grows and is done with preschool, ready to transition to kindergarten, and the students' needs are so significant that they need to attend an intensive resource program. Well, there is no intensive resource program at Denali, so then, and there is no intensive resource program at Weller, so then we'd choose again, what school are we gonna send them to? Certainly trying to stay as geographically close to their school as possible, we would try to do that. It's certainly possible that student could end up at University Park. You then have one sibling who is a Weller, Tannenaw, Lethrip feed. You have another sibling who has gone from couldn't go to Weller, then goes to Denali, then goes to University Park and becomes either Ryan or Randy Smith feed, and then to a West Valley feed. And so you can see that it, those effects of not being in your attendance area school kind of compound over time. And Mr. Burgess's comments earlier sort of struck me, related to Midnight Sun and the preschool IR partnership with those classes. That's really only possible where we have a preschool and an IR together, and that's only at five of our elementary schools currently. Obviously, you can have that same partnership with preschool and extended resource, but you again wind up with those preschool students aren't necessarily going to be feeding that elementary school. So that's a little bit larger context for some of what will come up next. And then additionally, special education bus routes are particularly cumbersome. They tend to have longer, longer bus rides than general education students, and part of that is because of that sort of geographic diversity, we're pulling kids from all parts of the community to specific elementary schools. So after, if school consolidation goes through in the way that it is proposed, if schools close, special education staff and resources would move to remaining schools based on the needs after boundary changes, so that's sort of speaking to the resource programs, the speech programs, that sort of thing. Specialized programs for the district would move to new locations, but the total number of programs would remain the same. So those nine programs that I was talking about that are at Midnight Sun, Pearl Creek, and Hunter would need to be moved to other places. We don't, we don't have so few students that we don't need those classrooms, so those classrooms need to go someplace else. More neighborhood schools would be able to have specialized resources, allowing for more students to attend schools in their attendance area instead of traveling farther, and transportation would be improved with shorter routes and more students potentially being able to ride with peers. And I am not suggesting there that a student who does not have the skills to ride with peers go on a general education bus, but at this point in time, we have so many students that are not at their attendance area school, it isn't even an option because we provide them transportation. And then our specialist, occupational therapist, school psychologists, we have some itinerant speech pathologists, I'll throw ELP into that mix also, have fewer campuses to travel between. And then the next slide is looking at where I would propose having district-wide classrooms for next year. So we would be, looking at the same number of classes, right now, we have 10 preschool classes, we would remain with 10 preschool classes. I will note that Anderson Crawford's elementary preschool is a, is technically a .5, it's just a morning class, so we have it at 10 locations, but nine classes. That would remain the same, but essentially, every attendance area school would be able to have a preschool. Benefits there is you have preschool students feeding into the elementary school that they attended preschool in, as well as the sibling and peer side of it. And one thing to note, I don't know how familiar any of you are with the preschool enrollment process, but I think parents who have gone through the preschool enrollment process, for the overwhelming majority of them, their, their students are enrolled in preschool, and we make a determination as to what school they were, attend, long after their IEP meeting has been held. So when we pick up students in, throughout the course of the school year, we hold meetings and we call them back with what, what school they're gonna go to. The bigger issue, I think, is when we move from preschool to kindergarten, preschoolers who have been in the same school for two to three years, depending on the program that they need to go to, those meetings often do not end with, here's where your kid's gonna go to kindergarten next year. We're asking our parents of students with disabilities to sometimes wait through much of the summer for us to be able to tell them where their student's gonna go to kindergarten. And that may be that they aren't, again, not necessarily going with brothers and sisters. I think most of us experienced the trying to figure out daycare and transportation for our kids going into kindergarten, and so that level amplified for, for families with students that have disabilities. Let's see, for extended resource, right now, Anderson Crawford, and, Anderson Crawford, Salcha and Two Rivers are our cross-categorical schools, so Anderson Crawford would remain a cross-categorical school. It's a large enough student population that we, we generally have more than a couple students who have fairly high needs. We have not been able to support that in the past with sort of dedicated staff. There's a, a resource teacher that's there, our preschool teacher serves as preschool in the morning, and then some of that dedicated support in the afternoon, and then we, we supplement that with paraprofessionals. Under this configuration, we'd be able to support with, not necessarily a dedicated full-time teacher, we'll have to look through overall numbers and things, but we'd be able to support that with dedicated staff. And the same is true for Arctic Light. Arctic Light is a challenging school for us to have a district-wide program in for the same reasons that it was challenging to have families from Tikusik move into, into, into town and that sort of thing. We have, there's issues with getting on post, and Arctic Light families don't necessarily like coming off of post to Lad and that sort of thing. So if we're able to do a cross-categorical program there, it makes it possible for students to stay at Arctic Light again with their, with their siblings. Lad is very close if, if needs don't support that. And then the remaining neighborhood schools would be able to have one ER classroom, and with, excuse me, with one exception, the North Pole area, we have a fairly high number of elementary school students, both in the IR and the ER programs in the North Pole area, so we'd have two, two classrooms at North Pole E, and then intensive resource, that is, oh, good, I was looking at that wrong, I thought we put two at Anderson Crawford, I was like, that's crazy talk. So Ann Wean would have two intensive resource classrooms because of the number of students who are within that Ann Wean boundary, and we'd have two IR classrooms at Tikusik, and otherwise, it would be one at each school. So you could, you could have students, for the most part, attending their attendance area school. That being said, there is, the district always has the discretion to assign a school for a student with particularly high needs based on the staff and resources that are available. A question that had come up earlier today with some special education staff related to RNs specifically, so if a student needed to have access to an RN, that might be a spot where the district was choosing what school that student attended as opposed to us assigning them to their neighborhood school. But certainly, by and large, we'd be able to have students served at the school that they would go to regardless of their disability, which I think has, has benefits. So I think that is the 45th of my 45 slides.
Were you trying to get that all in before we hit 10 o'clock?
I was. Did I go pretty, I'm good at going fast.
She's a speech therapist by training, and so she, you know,
She did fantastic.
Knows her way around words, yeah.
Fantastic at your 45 slides.
All right.
Three minutes, what are the questions?
So, yeah, let's see what questions we have.
Yep. So Ms. Maple.
My first one is, for U Park, would that mean that U Park gains another pre-K classroom, or would that be growing the pre-K class that's already serving deaf and hard-of-hearing? In theory, ideally.
Yeah, so no, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a change to U Park's current preschool at all. So U Park's preschool is not 100% deaf and hard-of-hearing. We, we cohort students there with sort of a priority for that, but it wouldn't change that. And I, we, I, we went through several scenarios, we, my department and I, I think my coordinators very much, we put in lots of hours in figuring out what proposed, with proposed boundary changes, where students would land, and if there was a spread makeup that made sense. We went through a couple of configurations where we left things very much as they are today, and just placed the nine, the nine programs that are, that would be displaced. And the, the spread, the spread works fairly nicely for students being distributed across the attendance area schools, including, including the preschool there.
Do you have a follow-up?
That was the second question, different.
Let's go to Ms. Hardy, then we'll come back. Mrs. Hardy?
Mine's more of a comment, but I'll make it brief. I, this was the one thing coming out of this that I've been like, it's a silver lining that I can definitely get behind. As somebody who has taught intensive resource, my child was in the pre-K program at Pearl Creek, and because there was an ER program, he was able to stay at that school, so I know the benefit of having already known people, already been established as part of that school, and the natural transition to kindergarten. And I've also have other friends who have been there and have their students at two separate schools now, where they went to pre-K and they had to transition to a whole another school. So from that perspective, it even came up in our strategic planning, Ms. Gillum was in there, of like, a lot of people don't realize this happens. This is something that people who have, people they love with more extensive needs have had to deal with historically in our district, and it, it really improves services for students with disabilities and their families. And so I'm, I'm grateful if we have to do this hard thing, that something good can come out of it.
And I will say that the, the layout as it's configured is sort of unique to the number of remaining schools. So, you know, this, this is built for the consolidation plan as it exists. If the consolidation plan changes, the configuration sort of naturally changes as well. So just to, an aside there. And one other note related to the, a student moving between preschool and kindergarten, what also often happens, and I don't want to, I don't want to understate that this, this does happen frequently, it's not like once or twice a year. We have students who are identified oftentimes in kindergarten, but they haven't necessarily been identified with a significant disability for a variety of reasons over the course of their early childhood. They arrive in kindergarten, and it's a, oh wow, moment for a lot of people, and start working slowly with parents over what the needs are. And again, if you imagine yourself as a parent who has taken your, your heart's joy to kindergarten, and you are now having the hard conversation about your kid's needs, and you have IEP meetings around what those needs will be, and if those needs are significant enough, that IEP meeting often ends with, and we can't meet your child's needs at this school. And it's a, it's a entire school change, and we have had, there was more than one student a couple of years ago that needed to move from Weller into town, and we had a, we had a student that was actually moving from Weller, Clean to Wood River was the option that we had, which is, which is a pretty good distance. And so I just do want to state that these are situations that do come up over and over again, and, and this type of arrangement would mitigate that in many ways.
Ms. Carol Hubbard, and then Mr. Dorn.
Mrs. Burnett, I just want to thank you. I'm glad that your 45 slides were the very end, because you tonight got to lay the silver lining, and that's the, that's beautiful. Looking at these numbers, so I just want to make sure, like, I want to repeat this almost for the listening audience, because you're talking a lot about what has happened in the past, what's happened in the past, but if we make some changes, if we make the changes we're proposing, it appears that every single elementary school, except Barnett, will have pre-K. Every single elementary school, except Barnett, will have extended resource and intensive resource, and that is phenomenal. So I think that's fantastic. So thank you for the hard work that you and your crew worked on this, because you guys nailed it. So thank you, this is awesome. Appreciate it.
Mr. Dorn.
Thank you for this, and this is a good point to reiterate, not only this part of the presentation, but all the way through, the, the wealth of information that you've already accumulated and will continue to accumulate. I do have some specific questions. Clarify for me, the U Park, the deaf and hard-of-hearing, do they have a separate classroom now?
No, there's
Integrated.
There's staff that, so we have a number of sign language interpreters and a deaf and hard-of-hearing teacher, and then a, I'm gonna
Okay, so they're not taking a classroom space.
But somebody that takes care of like the FM systems and hearing aids and that sort of thing, and so they are office there. Students are spread across the building. So preschool, we, we cohort there, but some deaf and hard-of-hearing students require the intensive program, some do not.
Right, but there, that's not a separate classroom.
Not a classroom, no.
Another factual piece, just to check, the district, the numbers of sped students that you gave in affected schools, that includes resource. My, my question is, how many are in the district-wide programs that are affected?
How many are in the district-wide programs that are affected? I have that, one second. Do, 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 87? No, that's not what I want. Come, come back to me
Okay.
On that, I can, I can get that. I know I have it here, it's just I have a lot of, a lot of things.
I have two other questions, so
Can we come back? Okay. We're gonna go to Mr. Burgess, then Ms. Dulean, and then Ms. Maple, and then Ms. Hardy. Oh, you didn't have, I thought you saw your hand up, sorry.
All right, so if this question is too much for 10 o'clock, just let me know, it's fine, but I am curious how this changes, or really could apply to anything that we've talked about tonight, but how this changes if we take one school off the closure list?
So, you know, one thing, Barnett is notably missing there, I was not treating Barnett as an attendance area school, and so I think that Barnett specifically, and I know this isn't exactly your question, I'll get to it, but the, I think Barnett, if we have a larger attendance area band at Barnett, could be treated sort of with that cross-categorical concept, and perhaps a split with preschool also, where similar to Anderson, where we just have an AM or a PM, because it would be a smaller attendance area number, I'd have to run numbers and see if it would support that, I believe that it would. If there was an additional overall full-size elementary school, If there was an additional overall full-size elementary school, I do not believe we would have, well, I know, we would not have the budget capacity. This does not require any additional staff. And to have a preschool, an IR, and an ER across a full nother elementary school would be, would be three teachers, and I'd estimate nine to 12 paraprofessionals, depending on the size of the classrooms. And so it would be a relatively heavy budget lift to add that. So at that point, I'm not sure it would be effective to try and do a spread. We would want to look more at something that more closely modeled our current structure, I think.
So if I'm paraphrasing, this is a benefit of consolidation, not of adding anything to the budget, whereas if we kept a school on, we would, in order to get the same benefit, we'd actually have to add staff.
And I did find, if I can answer Mr. Doran's question, I don't have the exact number that you're asking for, but I do have number of student moves. So if I'm taking out preschoolers that are moving anyway, and I'm taking out fifth graders that are moving anyway, there would be 99 students that are in the affected schools that need to move. If I'm taking that same number of students, or those same students out, so the kids that would be moving anyway, based on an age rollup, it would be 142 student moves to sort of realign attendance areas.
Ms. Dulean.
Yeah, I have a question, just because it's been, we haven't talked about it tonight, it's been all over the news and in the community conversations around this, and that is the idea of expanding another magnet. But right now, I see that there's, we don't offer any special education programs at our other magnet, the Barnett Elementary. Can we talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, and we do, so to be clear, we do have special education at Barnett Magnet School, but we have resource supports and related services that are available at all of our elementary schools. We don't house district-wide programs at schools of choice, sort of on, because we can't guarantee who gets lottery, and if those resources are, make up an entire classroom from year to year, and sort of the nature of a choice school, it expands the number of those classrooms that we need to have in ways that is not particularly efficient.
So talk to me a little bit about how those students are getting served. So let's say there's a student that needs, that would, that if they were in a neighborhood school, they would be part of this, part of one of the sped programs, but they get into a lottery, and they choose to go to a magnet school, or they choose to go to a school of choice. How is that, how do we meet that student's needs without having those programs?
Yeah, so it's a good question, and it's, the answer is going to be somewhat nuanced, and the, I was joking with staff earlier today, the answer in special education is always, it depends, and we look at it on a case-by-case basis, which is the big answer to your question. The smaller answer to your question is when students who have special education needs are selected for a lottery for any school of choice, be it elementary or at the upper grades level, IEP meetings are held to determine whether or not the student's needs can be met at that location, and if they cannot, it is the district's discretion to choose the location of those services. And so we would select a school that was able to meet that child's needs.
So and by selecting a school would mean moving them from that school of choice into the school that would meet their needs?
That has a program that meets their needs, yes.
Okay, okay. Okay. I do have another question, but put me back in the queue.
Okay, Ms. Maple.
Forgot I was in line. Sorry, you said that it would mean that there would be improved, gosh, I'm going to get the language wrong, improved transportation. Is there potential for transportation savings from students, like, is there potential for students that are currently on separate sped buses being able to be on their school if they're within their district and in pre-K, or is, would that stay the same, generally speaking?
So I think that there are students who currently ride special education buses, that if they were able to be served in their attendance area school, could ride a general education bus. That's not going to be the majority of our students, and I couldn't tell you that that's going to save an entire route. I do, and I don't, I'm not good enough at the overall structure, but I do believe some of our special education routes are so tentacled that there's bound to be a reduction there, but I will defer to the experts.
Yeah, our transportation director is nodding that there would be potential savings in the transportation arena. So, and just the nature of, you know, Ms. Hall is referencing the possibility of students riding the regular attendance area buses, that's, I think, the first option, but oftentimes they're not able. But in those events that they could ride a regular ed bus, we would certainly have the possibility of reducing our special ed routes.
And the reason that that's important, so the money side of it is, how it's routed is somebody else's concern. The part of it that's important to me is the least restrictive environment for a student extends to their school buses as well. So right now, we are sort of isolating special education students, not all, but district-wide program students, on buses that aren't, isn't necessarily based on their need on the bus, but rather my need to get them from one campus to another.
So to expand on the scenarios that you provided earlier, if I, if somebody lives out in the Weller School District, and I have two families out there, different families, one student might need an IR program, so they have to go, so a bus goes down the same street to pick up a student, to take him to where an IR program is, a bus goes down the same street for a different student to take him to where an ER program is, and so we're sending a bus, but that bus has to go to the same location to go to now three different schools, because they're taking kids to Weller, they're taking kids to, you know, Tikusik Brown, and they're taking kids to Lad.
Real briefly, this hasn't necessarily been outlined, but somebody referenced it earlier. By far, our longest ride times in the district are special ed students, and I think there could be some dramatic reductions, and another silver lining, dramatic reductions in ride times.
Just a follow-up comment. I mean, my son is four, just turned five, and is on the bus for an hour for his sped bus, which I'm eternally grateful for, but definitely living experience of that.
And some of it is special education transportation by its nature is sort of door-to-door service, and so things are longer because there's, you're not just picking up six kids standing by the stop sign on the corner, and so some of that feeds it also, but there's certainly geography that's part of it as well.
Mrs. Hardy?
It's just a piece of that, too. I remember you saying that our special education transportation is significantly more expensive, so those routes also, if we could consolidate any of them, would bring bigger savings than consolidating a regular route.
Absolutely.
Mrs. Dulean.
A follow-up to that, is, has that cost savings been captured in the $7 million estimate for consolidating the five schools?
No.
No?
No.
That's a really important point to, that's a really important data point that we're going to need to see. Thank you.
And it would be a period of time before we were able to capture students being able to ride a general education bus, because that's not something we can unilaterally decide as part of their IEP meeting, so that would be a slow roll over time.
Mrs. Hardy?
On that same vein, is there a way, though, even if students aren't on a gen ed bus, to consolidate routes because they're serving a smaller geographic area?
I'd leave that to Ryan, but I believe yes.
Get in the head nod over here. Yep.
Got eyes in the back of your head, Mr. DeGraw. Mr. Doran, and then Ms. Dulean.
Question that came up, and just to confirm my experiences, yes, but that when we move a district-wide program, the team ostensibly would stay together. Individuals may make a decision that they, it's too far from home or whatever, but when a district-wide program moves from one school to another, typically you try to keep the team together.
You have the discretion to do that in the current negotiated agreement, yes.
I have another question. Okay, this is in terms of impact on regular classroom availability, and I appreciate looking at number of classrooms. When I look at the numbers, and I really appreciate the spreadsheet of programs and stuff like this, in many cases, they, the district-wide programs are located in regular classrooms. As we move students and increase in the population, we need regular classrooms. I'm concerned with the availability, because we may not have enough classrooms within the school, and that may impact our decisions. I am aware, and it's been wonderful going into schools and seeing the opportunity to use regular classrooms, and sometimes across the school. Some have used, the band orchestra room has added a classroom, but it's been mentioned a couple of times. Maybe in the future, we can have that back. Some band orchestra rooms are non-windowed, they're not really good rooms for classroom. So my bottom-line question is the analysis and the count of actual classroom availabilities, and where we're increasing, in many cases, the number of specialized programs using regular classrooms.
I think I understand your question, if you want me to address it, or, yeah. So we have actually done a very careful analysis of this, and we addressed it in our first presentation on January 6, and we estimate that most of our schools have about 15 empty classrooms, regular classroom spaces that are not being fully utilized now, and that if we fill them up with additional students, we would still have, on average, five to seven additional spaces available, not to count, not even including the other spaces, the smaller office spaces and things like that. So that is in the first presentation slide deck that we provided on January 6, and we did it, Ms. Karyn and I actually color-coded and counted all the build, the classrooms, when we counted the regular ed classrooms, as well as the special education designated spaces, and we made sure that we would have minimum of three, but usually there was plenty more than that, of regular classroom spaces that could be dedicated to special education use.
Okay, and I do want to acknowledge that, yes, I looked at that slide back, and I appreciated that, especially in terms of the support classrooms, I, so I appreciate your looking at that. I'm still concerned, especially when we get to 91, 95% of capacity.
Right, and so that was a look back at what the capacities had been in 2007, and schools being at those places, knowing that at that time, we also still had three classrooms dedicated in most of those places for special education services.
Okay, yeah, I will just say, and not reiterate, that I, it is a concern, I hope we will continue to look, to look at that.
Absolutely, yep.
Especially not in 2007, but 2026, 25, 26, and those capacities, and looking at those schools. Thank you.
Mrs. Dulean.
Thank you, I'm looking at Slide 37. It states that approximately 1,550 elementary special education students, and that of the five proposed, there's 332 students that require special education. So this conversation is around these 332 students. As a district as a whole, I just want to, I think it's important to kind of, this was surprising to me, how many of our students percentage-wise are in a special education program?
Surprising to me as well.
Can you state the number for the record?
The percentage?
Yeah.
Wait, you're, it's right around, no, it's right around 20, let me, I'll get it for you.
I think it's okay to say a ballpark right now.
It's been increasing by a percentage point pretty consistently over the last seven years, and I'm going to say my ballpark is like 25 right now. I quit paying attention after we crossed 20, because after we crossed 20, I feel like that's where it was, it was into the wow factor.
Yeah, so this is a significant amount of our population that would benefit, so I just, I think that that's surprising to me.
And the majority of those 332, again, are in resource services or speech-only type students that are, the majority of their day is general education. The district-wide program classrooms, which is much more what we're talking about with the colored chart there, is a smaller number of students. It's, I think I have it handwritten, it's driving me crazy that I don't have it right here. It's probably, it's going to be in the 100 and 120-ish.
Yeah, so I mean, to follow up on that, the concern that we've been hearing, especially from parents who have students in the special education programs at one of the named schools, there has been a resounding concern of keep the team together, because there's growth that happens with that team, and trust that happens with that team. And I think Mr. Doran asked a little bit about that, but can you just talk a little bit more, like, that is, you've thought through that plan?
So what I will say is that there is nothing that makes me happier than to hear a parent saying how wonderful their special education team is, and on a greater district level, how wonderful their school is, but for me specifically, how great their special ed team is, and how their student has made growth with that special education team. So we, certainly looking at a general shift to more of an attendance area model, impacts the movement of more staff and impacts the movement of more students than if we left everything alone, except for the major three impacted schools. But then we perpetually have these same disruptive decisions over and over and over again, instead of sort of once now, and it smoothes out a little bit over time. Related to exactly where staff move, I'm reluctant to be able to say exactly where specific staff members will go. Once boundaries are completely established to where I can do better than sort of projecting guestimates at numbers, we can start to make those projections, and then I have to follow the negotiated agreement, obviously. But it is certainly, so far, the feedback that I have gotten is both staff and families want to stay together as much as possible, which we would make happen as much as possible.
Mrs. Hardy?
And it's just kind of piling on to the fact that our special education population has well surpassed 20%, and for those listening in the audience, we are funded, except for our intensively funded students, which is different, with a 20% block grant. So in the foundation formula, they give us 20% more students to help us cover the expenses of providing special education services. We have more than 20% of our students needing special education services. So it's not funded well for the student population we currently have, and that number has grown every single year and continues to grow, and yet the block grant hasn't changed since it was implemented in 1998, when we redid the foundation formula.
Any other questions from the board at this time on special education? Seeing none, back to you, Ms. Laplat.
Actually, I think it's back to Dr. Minert for our closing comments.
Yeah, maybe if we can just go to the, we'll stick on this slide.
Which one?
Back one. Yeah, we'll just stick here, we won't go through the other ones, because I feel like we've had enough conversation about our student enrollment, but this should say right-size and revitalize. We've had a lot of conversations throughout the year, and certainly the last month in terms of our opportunity here as a school district and as a school board. Oftentimes, these opportunities don't come about to really change the trajectory of districts, and this is a good opportunity for us. I know it's incredibly painful, it's an incredibly messy process, but I think you heard tonight about some of the silver linings that can come out of the right sizing of our school district, that then enables us to revitalize our school district. And I really want to thank the community for stepping up and participating in our strategic planning efforts, both on our steering team and our facilities teams. Those were not easy teams to be on, they put themselves out there and sacrificed on behalf of the district to be a part of those teams. Also want to thank the community for the feedback that they've shown throughout this process. It's amazing what kind of creative solutions can come about in a short amount of time, and I think that's what really gives me hope. You know, on a slide that I had prepared for tonight, it talked about some of the things that we could add back if BSA dollars come our way, but really, as I was sitting here, listening to testimony and thinking about these closing comments, we don't need additional. and thinking about these closing comments, we don't need additional money to do some of the revitalization efforts that, that would really make a difference. And, and what gives me hope is thinking about creative ideas that are coming about, like magnet models, or focus schools, or different ways of educational models that don't necessarily require additional funding, but that could make a big difference in terms of keeping our students engaged in our schools and reattracting students back to our district. And so I'm very hopeful in that process. I think we're poised to start that process after we get through the budget cycle and continue our strategic planning conversations. And I'm hopeful regardless of what the outcome of this decision is from the school board, that the amount of energy people have poured into this boardroom in the last month, that they pour into the conversations going forward, because we need that same energy, we need that same intensity, we need the same creative thoughts to make Fairbanks really the best district it can be. And so I remain hopeful, we've got great momentum behind us, our data is showing that. And I think we're poised to continue to do great things. And so just thank the community and the board for going through this process. I know it's incredibly difficult, but I am hopeful that we're really gonna come out better on the other side of it.
With that, is there any questions or discussions from the board? Seeing none? With that, we, oh, Mr. Doran. I hesitated, I, for a reason. I hesitated for a reason.
So we just, and, and not to continue conversation, extend conversation tonight, but for the board, it was alluded to earlier. We've had, and you've had lots of informational data. But as a board, whether we need more time to discuss the generality of it, the application of it, prior to a decision-making meeting, and I don't know whether that's necessary or not. And you guys have been involved in that over the last few weeks that I haven't. So I just put it on the table here.
Any other board members? Ms. Dulean.
Thank you. I, I realize it's 10:30 at night. I do want to call out, and just thank the creativity that's coming forth from the community. Specific, specifically, we've seen that from the, from the Pearl Creek community in, in proposing a magnet. And what I'd like to say, to piggyback on what you just said, Dr. Minert, you know, it, I think that that shows that there is a lot of energy and a lot of creativity around it. I'll state that as a board member, it's, this has been, this has been a Herculean exercise in taking in as much information as possible in the shortest amount of time and parsing through it, and also asking for a lot more. And I thank you for delivering on that. You, you really have. And then, of course, you know, taking the community feedback and not just from, from, from five different school communities, plus redistricting. So I, I just, I don't know when the best time is to have a conversation about, about that, to let them know that we're hearing, we're, we're listening, we're looking at it, we're reviewing everything. So it gets a little bit messy, but I just want to thank, I, I guess that I would, what I want to say is, there has been a tremendous amount put in front of us, and I look forward to continuing to innovate beyond the budget cycle. And, and hopefully, we are in a space where perhaps we do have more BSA money and can decide how we want to reinvest that, so.
With that, I'd like to remind everybody that tomorrow, we do have our three-hour public testimony period. For the listening public, for anybody out there who would like to come, you can get signed up by calling Mrs. Richardson in our school board office. And we will take as much testimony as much tomorrow night. We appreciate everybody who has given us every piece of you that you have, the board, administration, the public. And we will all see you tomorrow. And with that, we are adjourned.